I call our retreat to order here, and that's the last time we'll talk about order today. Welcome, everyone. This is our seventh annual County Commissioner Planning Retreat. This is a very shirt-sleeved, relaxed environment. There are a few little housekeeping issues I want to take care of first. First of all, I'm happy that members of the public are here and other staff are here as well, but we've got to follow the same rules, is that the meeting is between the folks at the table and whoever we might involve in that. We ask the people in the audience to not be talking or whatever, and if you need to, go outside. Also, please turn off your devices or silence them. And other than that, I plan on doing the same thing we've done, you know, every time I've run these, and that is, this is a shirt-sleeve, what we call, environment. Randy kind of loosened his tie this morning, so I'm going to consider that he's relaxed. I'm going to forego the formalities of calling people by their titles, so it's up to you, but today I'm going to call people by their first names. We're a small group, so I don't think we need to do the card stand-up to talk. If you want to talk, just be...
Randy, I don't need that, anyway.
So, anyway, what we'll try to do is, we'll try to listen, okay? I've said this before, there seems to be two types of people, those that listen and those that are waiting to talk. Let's be those that listen today, and if you have something you want to say while somebody's talking, use your little pad, write it down. And so, we'll try not to be too formal, but if, you know, if you're talking, try to let the people talking finish their thoughts or whatever, but this is more of a discussion. The rules today are basically, you know, we're going to try to come up with some goals and priorities. You all have done this before. And when we leave here today, then, you know, we'll have a list that Randy and the folks will put together. It'll come back to us at the next meeting or a meeting in the future to officially vote on and say, "These are our priorities," or whatever. But today, more is just about building consensus and getting on the same page, and I think today is more just about discussion. A couple of things, we'll get into it as we go along. There is one bit of business that we need to discuss, and I wasn't aware of this. Like I said, I've been here quite a while, and I was not aware of this, so it just was brought up today, is that traditionally, most of the time, as far as I know, the chair has bought lunch for the meeting, for our retreat, and at the leadership summit, the county does that because other people are there. So, it was brought to my attention today that the clerk's staff is not allowed to eat if the chair buys lunch. But, and I think that's unfair, because they're going to, we're doing a working lunch, and they're going to be right here with us. So, if it's okay with the board, even though the item to approve up to $250 was not passed at the last meeting, I understand that today's lunch has been put on a P-card for this meeting. If the board agrees to retro-vote the next meeting to say that's okay, then we can invite the clerk's staff to join us for lunch, okay? So, does anybody have a problem with that?
No, sir.
Okay, so, what, one of the first things we'll have to have is that approval of the county buying everybody around the table's lunch today, right? That's really what we're looking for?
Well, we'll bring it back to the next meeting, but you can give me consensus now, the actual official word.
Right. That's what I said. The next me, that's the first item on the next agenda to vote on. Yes, ma'am?
So, you're saying it's, you're not buying it, the county will buy it?
Right.
Okay.
And for future reference, I won't be here next year, but for the future chairmans, my understanding is if you want anybody other than the commissioners to eat, then the county's going to have to buy. So, just so we know that. That's, I guess that's the clerk's rule. I don't know if that's the county's rule, but the clerk's...
Not the county's rule.
Yeah, okay.
It's the clerk's rule.
Right, exactly. So, that's the clerk's rule. So, just, just so, I'm not doing that just because I'm getting out of buying lunch, okay? So, I'm just...
You're cheating out on us.
Well, you can always donate it back to the county, right?
Yeah, yeah. But I just think it's fair, because, again, today's lunch is going to be a working lunch. We're not going to stay here any longer we have to, but as long as everybody feels like we're getting something done, we'll do that. So, we'll work through lunch, everybody will eat, we'll be all set, okay? A couple of other things, we'll do like we usually do. If you have to use the restroom, make a phone call, whatever, get up, go, do it, or whatever, because if we keep taking breaks or whatever, we won't get out of here. So, with that said, let's do this. Let's go around the table. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. How's that? I think that's a good way to start. Let's just start with this one idea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so, with that said, let's do some introductions. We'll just go around the table, and today, you know, whoever wants to go first can go first, but if nobody jumps up and volunteers, so that not the same person's going first every time, I might mix it up a little bit. But we go around, instead of just saying your name or whatever, it might be interesting to say, you know, a little bit about your background, if you've got kids, grandkids, or whatever. Don't tell us what they did all last summer or whatever. But, and, you know, how long you've lived in Citrus County and what brought you here, okay? So, that's a good way to kind of do an introduction. Why don't we start over here with Holly?
Holly Davis. I first moved here in 1978 when my father retired after 33 years in the Navy as a fighter pilot, and I grew up as a river rat on Crystal River. Absolutely fell in love with Citrus County. Had to go away to get, to build my career, but came back to help my mom with dementia, and then came back yet again, and I'm here to stay now. So, I have, I am the cool Aunt Holly for many children. I don't have, I was unfortunately not blessed with any of my own, but I love kids, and I have a dog and other fur children.
Jeff Gennar, my wife, Renee and I moved to Citrus County probably 26 years ago, 27 years ago. Started our chiropractic practice here in the county, and we've been very blessed. We've got two kids. Our daughter Casey will be graduating with her master's degree in May. We're very proud of her, and our son Weston's at Florida State University and is pursuing his bachelor's degree there. Also very proud of him.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Denise?
So, I'm...
Staff Sergeant?
Thank you. So, I'm Denise Lynn. I've been in Citrus since 1997. After some time in the Air Force, I went to, did my undergraduate degree, and I lived in a little town called Navarre outside of Fort Walton Beach. Sold real estate there, did my undergraduate degree, and went to University of Florida for law school and wound up here. And I'm sure he loves for me to tell everyone this, the reason I'm in Citrus County is because of Clark Stillwell.
And that's part two of the story, if anybody's ever interested in that. Doug, do you want to participate in this? I think it'd be interesting if we all knew a little bit more about it. You don't have to. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Why does he get out of it?
First of all, I'm Doug Wright. I'm a retired Navy chief. Ooh rah. Moved down here in 2008. Loved the place. My father used to live here before he passed in 2013, so he was with him when I came down. And currently, I love my job. I love being Command Central at the different desk. The Canto is just, you know, I was here first. My family, their stories. I worked for the utilities department for Ken Chief for a year, and of course, Kobe Phillips used to be exec in my position. She was leaving, looking for somebody to replace him. I didn't reply for the job because, hey, you know, I was good. I had a retainer coming from the military, so I didn't, you know, didn't necessarily need any more stress. Plus, there was a particular person that's a commissioner I didn't want to work for.
That's well-planned.
So, eventually, Brad Thorpe was the county administrator. He hired, he interviewed five people. He didn't like none of them. So, he came to Ken, he said, "Ken, I want your guy." Ken says, "You want my guy?" He said, "Yeah, I want your guy." So, Ken says, "Well, what if I say no?" Ken says, "I want your guy." So, he came to me, said, "Hey, we want the job." And you know what? I didn't really want it, but in the military, you always kind of say, "Look, you don't run away from a challenge." So, I took the job, and that guy was my best friend for the four years he was here. So, my fears were, you know, unfounded, but I just didn't want to be part of that whole nonsense. But I love my job. I really love my job.
And that's the most I've heard Doug talk at one time in seven years.
I'm a behind-the-scenes guy. I like to be behind-the-scenes.
That's why I put you on the spot there. Scott?
And here's what I can say, we love Doug. Doug keeps us all straight, and we couldn't do it without him. But I was born in Cocoa. My parents brought me over when I was one month old, so I've been in Citrus County my entire life. Citrus County is my home and will always be my home. Have a lovely wife. Been married 32 years. Have two beautiful children. I have a princess of a granddaughter that's just turned three years old Monday, and I have a grandson that will be here in March. So, we enjoy those grandkids dearly and have a lot of fun. And I promise you, those of you who don't have grandkids, it's everything they say when you do have them. So, and I'm very blessed to be here in this county and to have the family that I do.
Thank you, sir. Ruthie?
Ruthie Slayball, and I don't know if you all know this, but I am the eighth of nine children, same parents.
Same parents.
Yeah, and my dad was a World War II pilot and then flew commercial airlines, and he was, took, went to Sarasota to be the senior captain at the Sarasota Bradenton Airport, and that's where I was born. And my mother was an RN, married to Jerry, so, going 29 years, maybe? I moved up here in 95 with him, kicking and screaming, moving up here. You couldn't get me out of Citrus County now. I have two twin daughters. Julia is getting her master's at UF in May, and Catherine is starting her fifth year at Georgia Tech and then will be commissioned into the Space Force. So, she's, they're both good girls and no grandchildren.
Not yet.
Not yet. And I'm thankful for this job. I found this year to be tough. I've learned a lot, but I have a lot more to learn, and I am a ferocious researcher, so I look forward to the next few years.
Randy, from an old pile, hello?
Yeah, yeah. My father was a contractor, so I worked for my father for a while, and then I went to work for a group as a live brand, and I got hired by one of their clients with the city of Richmond. So, that's how I got my career started. I have two sons. One is in Safety Harbor in Tampa. He's the head design engineer for Raytheon, and I have one in Fort Myers, and he has his own business down there. So, and we have three grandkids, so...
Outstanding, outstanding. And, well, I know you've been here at least seven years, because that's how long I've been here, right? So, I have stories about everybody, but I'll just give you a couple. First of all, Doug, so when I, one in 14, yeah, 2014, I think the election was the day before, the next day I get this call from the guy at the county, "Hey, Commissioner Kitchen, here's what you're going to do. Here's where you're going to go. Here's what you need to do." And I'm going, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, who are you calling up and telling me what I got to do?" You know? And, boy, Doug and I got off on the wrong foot, because he was thinking, "I probably did make a mistake taking this job," you know? So, but anyway, once I got in here and I saw that Doug and I, I think, have learned to appreciate each other since then or whatever. And Randy, I still, to this day, with Denise and Randy, when we interviewed county administrators, I think when Scott and I first came in, we had an interim director. In our first job, we had to meet with the headhunter and get it, find us a county administrator, and so we had five applicants, and according to my score sheet, they kept changing, but the number one guy never changed. Randy was always my number one guy. The two and three guy kept moving around, but, but he was always there. And to this day, in my mind, some people think Randy needs to get out and hobnob and go to more cocktail parties and that kind of stuff, and I don't think so. I hired Randy because he likes being in his office with his nose in the books with, you know, going through the numbers, and so I just think he's done a marvelous job. And someday, we're going to go back and look at the millions and millions and millions of dollars Randy Oliver has saved Citrus County in many different ways, just in bond refinancing to start with. So, we've come a long way. I think, I have to say, all of the staff, everybody at the county, what I've seen in the time that I've been here, other counties are cutting their budgets, other counties are raising their tax rates, other counties are laying off people. Our county has record-high reserves, okay? Our county gives its employees raises, and our counties are expanding services and not laying people off. So, we really have something, I think, to be proud of with the way that we've operated.
And cutting taxes.
And cut taxes, right? So, with all that said, my name's Ron Kitchen. I hate to admit it, but I moved here when I was 31 years old, and my next birthday, next month, I'll be 66. So, I've lived here for 35 years, right?
My whole life.
Yeah, exactly. And, well, and the other interesting thing is, is I've now lived in Citrus County longer than anyplace else I've ever lived. My wife Carrie and I have been married for 35 years. We have two grown sons, Sean and Troy, which our oldest is now 30. That's hard to believe. And they both are still in the area, and it's kind of a shame, because what's interesting with a small community, my son Sean is not doing that now, but he went through the police academy. And the whole time, Sean, and they make you wear these uniforms, right, with your name on it. So, my son's sitting in the class at the police academy, and instructor looks out and goes, "Kitchen, are you related to ...?" And he goes, "Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am." And so, he said, by the time this semester, the whatever was half over, they'd have a new, remember the previous county commissioner, I want to say, started with an S?
Shembry.
Shembry. Shembry was one of their speakers. He comes in, he sees Sean's name, he goes, "Kitchen, are you ...?" And the whole class goes, "Yes, sir, he is." And so, I just say that because when you're in a small community and everybody knows everybody, sometimes our kids, you know, for the worst or better, pay the price for that. So, with that said, what we're going to try to do today is, you have kind of a rough agenda in front of you. What we've asked, and it's flexible. If you have, on here it says, submit five to six goals for the next five to 10 years. If you have one, if you have 20, you know, whatever, we'll go around and talk about them. But what I asked Randy to do, what's in front of you, is our notes from last year. If you haven't looked at them lately, you might want to take a few minutes and peruse them, because when we look at this year's goals, one of the things we might want to look at is what we've done previously, and, you know, maybe we'll go around the table and start with last year's goals and say, "We did this. Take it off the list. We're not, that's not going to get done. Take it off the list." Maybe start to see what's left on the list and see if that's something we still want to pursue or not. It's interesting, some of the things, whether or not we did them or not, they've been dealt with, so we can probably, you know, take them off the list. Then we'll go around and we'll talk about individual commissioners' goals, and, you know, they'll try to win support for your positions. They're going to post the things that we agree to put up on the board, and then, you know, we'll go into lunch, and this, again, is all very informal, but our plan at lunchtime is just to get our lunch, come back here, keep talking, you know, and we'll go on around. Then what we want to do is come up with a method of prioritizing, you know, if we end up with one item or 15. I like to say, if we could only do one thing this year, what would it be? And if we could then only do two things this year, what would they be? And then go from there. And again, this is just my recommendations. If the board wants to do something else, we can. One of the things we like to do, too, is to kind of benchmark how we'll know if we accomplish that, and then, of course, talk about anything you want to talk about. I also want to mention to the public that it is a public meeting, but we won't be taking any public comment today. If you hear something today that you want to comment on, we invite you to the next B.O.C.C. meeting to come in and stand up and open to the public and make any comments that you would have there. Okay, so, again, the typical ground rules, be nice, which we always are. You can disagree, but let's be nice while we disagree or whatever. And again, be passionate, that's fine, but don't demagogue, right, Jeff? That's my word. I don't like that. So, let's start with this. Let me just kind of go around the table and think about this, and I started with Holly, so I'll start with Jeff this time. At the end of the day today, those of you that know me, the one thing I can't stand is wasting your time. So, at the end of this day, how will you judge the, how will you measure the success of today? So, if we walk out of here at the end of the, I like to start at the beginning on how we're going to measure the end. So, when you walk out of here today and if somebody comes up to you today and says, "What's today a success?" Are you going to say yes or no, based on what? And you can ponder that, or you can start talking and see if it comes to you while you talk or whatever you want to do, but that's what I'd like everybody to kind of talk about, because then we can make sure we focus in on getting to where everybody thinks we should be today.
I would, I would deem it a success if we walk out of here at the end of the day with a handful of goals, short and long-term goals, or maybe long-term goals with short-term benchmarks, that we're all committed to and committing to stick by it. If we're setting specific goals that require funding, agreeing that we're going to stick to it and fund them, and not vacillate or move off of those points as we start moving, meeting again throughout the year, and we get back here again next year and say, "Well, we agreed that this is a priority. We just did not agree on funding it." Well, if we're not going to fund it, it's not a priority. So, that's how I would deem it a success today.
Great. I wrote that down, so at the end of the day, we'll look back at that. Scott?
Yeah, and I agree with Jeff. We've got to set goals today that we can accomplish, and we, and I'll tell you, I got two things on my list, period, and that's it. One's infrastructure. We have failed to fund infrastructure, and we've got needs coming up that's going to be big, big money. And we've got to put these, and then the second one's the, start planning for courthouse, you know, the judicial needs. I was in the tag office yesterday, and we have got to start as a commission doing long-term planning for a new judicial system and for the other elected officers, you know, that, for long-term needs. So, but I agree, we've got to put goals in front of us that we can accomplish and that we're going to fund in this coming budget. And, you know, look at red repaving. I think that we've already talked about $10 million, and, you know, trying to get to $10 million. Well, if we're going to get to $10 million, then we can't have all these Pet P projects. And one, you know, we've got to start doing, you know, looking now and doing the cutting and, again, making sure that these projects are funded and we get to our goals and we accomplish those goals.
Okay, great. Ruthie?
I think that, exactly what you said, that we have goals and we stick to them and we fund what we think are priorities and be strong and not waver from it. And if everybody agrees with everything I want, then I find that it will be a successful meeting.
So, it sounds like so far it's unity, though.
Yes, I want unity.
All right. Holly?
I agree with all three of my colleagues, and, but, that was a funny joke, but to be honest, I do think it would be great to get to the end of the day with unity on all of our projects. And I know the thing that I specialize in that I want to talk about today is particularly going to need some discussion to hopefully bring everybody along with it, but I do believe especially, I thought this a year ago, it's on my list for last year. After a year in this job, I believe even more that we, it's going to make us way more efficient if we go in a particularly different direction. But I, we got to take care of our own stuff. To Scott's point, we're not taking care of infrastructure, and that's a major, major priority. We got to at least take care of the stuff we have, you know? So...
Good, okay. And I'll just, you know, I want to kind of be the devil's advocate today, too, and I'll say, in the years we've been doing this, we come in and we say that's our plan, but I remember specifically in the past, and I've said this before, I mean, we got to be open and candid, that we talk about five to 10 years down the road, okay? I'm not going to be here next year. I don't know if Scott is or not. I don't know if he's made up his mind yet or not. So, commissioners change, okay? It's, anymore, it's rare for a commissioner to serve more than one term. I mean, what's happening, if you, when you go to FAC, they'll tell you that the majority of county commissioners in Florida don't make two terms, okay? And so, when you're trying to set policy or goals for five to 10 years from now, and you have four years to do it, how do you do it? Okay? And my thing is, because I've been to enough of these, I've been to these where commissioners sit around and go, "Yeah, we're going to leave here. We are unified until the phone starts ringing and that unification ends," okay? Real world is, yeah, we're all unified. I remember we met at, I don't believe the two newer members were here, but I think we were in Home Assassin we met, and the last thing we said, "Five-oh, we know we're going to take hits. We are going to institute universal trash." Everybody remember that? Last year, what'd we say? Universal trash, okay?
Yes, and I've already walked off of this.
Yeah, so, again, we leave, we leave here, but I'm just saying all that because it's not about us, okay? The only way that we're going to come up with achievable, long-term plan and goals is to have, to represent the community. It's not about telling, doing something, get elected, coming in, trying to do our thing while we're here, and then moving on, and then the next group comes in. It comes into finding issues related to quality of life that the whole community buys in, so that that program is still there when we're gone, you know? That's what I think. So, the way that I would measure success today, because I have no doubt, we'll, we'll come together today, we'll set some goals that everybody can agree to, we'll fund them or whatever, but remember, that funding is only in place as long as the next county commission comes in, you know? So, for it to have real lasting effects, in my mind, we have to come up with something that the community says we're behind. And here's the challenge for folks running for office. I've always thought, I did this when I ran, I would go out and I'd say, "Are you happy with the direction of Citrus County, or do you think it needs to change?" And if people said they were happy, there you go. And if they said it needed to change, you'd say, "How so?" And so, I think what we have to do is we have to kind of come up with a leadership direction that says, not everybody, not 100%. We saw that yesterday. Nobody's always going to agree on everything, but generally speaking, are we representing what people expect their county to be, not what we expect it to be, okay? And so, if we can do that, I think we can leave here today that I'll be able to say five years from now, well, I'm sitting on my back porch in my rocking chair, I'll be able to say, "Yes, I remember the day we had that discussion, and I remember it happened," okay? And I'll just say this before we start the actual bringing out the goals. A great example, I'll give you two great examples. When I came into office seven years ago, the county had just instituted a 31% tax increase. And the reason they did that was multiple reasons. They said this, they said Duke and whatever. Well, it ended up Duke paid their tax bill. All that stuff went away, but the money never went back to the citizens. So, the citizens pitched in an increase forever of 31%, and then during that time, the county continued to deficit spend. They were spending their reserves. They were spending, not only their reserves, they went into trust funds. And by that, what used to happen was the excess fees from each constitutional officer went into a trust fund for county buildings. We were supposed to be saving to build a county building, and at that time, that was the plan, and then, instead of cutting the budget and doing what they needed to do, they started tapping into those funds. So, not only were they spending more than they, than they brought in, but all that money that was set aside, when it came time for the courthouse, when it came time for that, it was all gone, okay? This board has set the policy that says, "We're going to try that again. We're going to take the excess funds from the constitutionals, and we're going to put that into a fund, and it's been earmarked towards the courthouse." So, if we stick with that, when the, when the time comes, you know, it should be there. If we don't stick with it, if the next board that comes in spends that fund that we all established, we're going to be right back in that circle. So, that's what I mean. We can do what we need to do, but in order to see it through, especially, Jeff knows this on the MPO, probably Ruthie is learning it, they tell you when you come in, if you're a county commissioner, it's going to take 12 years for your project to get on the list, and you're probably only going to be in office four years. How do you get that 12-year project done? That's the same kind of thing I'm talking about today. We just need to know that it's not just us when we leave, because, like I said, when I'm on my rocking chair, I want to be able to say, "Yep, that's exactly what they wanted. That's what the people want today, and we've committed to it," because it didn't take us, we didn't get to where we are today in one day, you know? It took a while. So, with that said, my, how did you choose, how did you summarize that? Long-term, okay, good. We got that. So, we got everybody's measurement of success today. We'll try to keep all that in mind as we... Long-term, okay, good, we got that, so, so we got everybody's measurement of success today, we'll try to keep all that in mind as we go around the table, so we can start with the first, uh, couple, two, three goals, uh, I think, Scott, you were the first one to kinda throw two out, you wanted to elaborate on this, too?
Um, yeah, I mean...
Could you turn that, and then we'll go back, that'll be the last page we look at today when we finish to see if we, if we met that.
I, I believe that, um, we have got to commit to our infrastructure, um, I don't, I think that, uh, you know, not only us, I think nationwide, I think the counties just get away from, you know, e- even the federal government and state, we get away from infrastructure, but, this county's, uh, you know, I'm just gonna take Ozella Road, uh, we're getting an analysis on Ozella Road, millions of dollars that's gonna take to, uh, shore up that road, and that's just one small project, we talked about ten million dollars to get into road repaving. Uh, if we're gonna do that, we've gotta be committed to go into this budget year, and start actually some of these projects that, um, aren't really needed, um, you, you know, and, and we've gotta take that money and put it to where, uh, it, uh, for long-term investment. And again, the, the next one is, um, this county continues to grow. Our judicial system, uh, the sheriff can go out there and arrest all the people, uh, in, in the world, but if the judicial system and the judges can't, uh, have a facility, uh, to take care of these needs, uh, then, then nothing gets done. And, and I do believe that, uh, we have, uh, a, a need coming, uh, sooner than later, and I believe this board, uh, needs to, um, start, uh, figuring out a way, uh, to pay for it, uh, down, down the road. And again, uh, you know, we'd get those funds back, we, you, you see some of our constitutional officers spending those and not giving it back to us, and spending those on things that, um, don't mean much, okay? Uh, you know, I, I'm very disappointed to see that, um, you know, an elected official can't, uh, come to the commissioners and, uh, have a discussion on his needs, uh, but wants to go to the paper and throw it out there. But yet, he takes that, uh, you know, quite a bit of money and goes and buys shiny objects versus putting it on boots on the ground. So, uh, I, I think that, uh, we, we need to commit to making sure that, uh, you know, th- these things are addressed, and, uh, to me, that's, uh, that's not very good, um, you know, I think, I think that, um, we, we have to make sure, we gotta hold our feet to the fire, and, and we've, we've gotta do these, and, and again... So my, my two goals today are infrastructure and, and, uh, planning for, uh, judicial, uh, building.
And specifically, uh, your infrastructure, you mentioned Ozella Road and road resurfacing.
That's just one, I mean, we, we...
But I think we need, we, uh, overall, but we need to have something specific, because if you just say infrastructure at the end of the year...
If, if, the infrastructure needs we got coming, um, are tremendous when it comes to, I'm just, you know, I just use that as one, I mean, drainage, uh, you know, we, we did put a fee in place for that, but drainage, roads, uh, you know, if we're not gonna invest back in our infrastructure, then, you know, we're, we're gonna continue to hear the people just...
And resiliency has to be part of that.
That's right.
Resiliency, the, um...
But I mean, Randy, what other infrastructure goals, needs are we gonna have here coming in the future that's gonna, that cost, take a lot of money to, to handle?
Well, you got space, your most immediate need is road resurfacing.
Right, but even that, we talked about putting ten million, okay, so now we got, what, four? So now we've gotta come up with six million dollars, okay, that's gonna take some cutting, you know, sharpen the pencil, now when it comes to the budget cycle. Uh, you know, where are we gonna get the other six million?
Well, let, let's do this, if you guys don't mind, 'cause in the past, what we do is, we kinda go around the table, throw all these ideas out. I'd like to this year, just focus as each commissioner talks and get everybody's input about what that commissioner had to say, right? So, since Scott's started us off and throwing those out, who wants to talk about, do you support that, don't you support that? And if you do, how, how do we do it not, or whatever? And, and I, I'll, this one time, I'll go first, 'cause I'll give you an example of what I'm talking about, okay? Uh, Jeff said it earlier, we can come up, I used to say, you could put, you know, put, uh, new roads down throughout the entire county, but if there's no money in the budget to do it, it's not happening, right? So the budget is the tool that tells administration, here, here's your, uh, here's your plan of action. This is kinda what I thought about this, like we've done everything else, we, what, what did we adopt years ago, pay-as-you-go, okay? Instead of borrowing money, um, one of the things I'll talk about later is, I think a long-term, ten-year goal is Citrus County should be out of debt. We should have zero debt, okay? How does that get done? Most people go to buy a car, and they go out and borrow the money to buy a car, okay? If you have to buy a new truck tomorrow, do you wanna take a loan out for it? For the county, okay, not for you personally, but for the county. No, because we have set aside a renewal and replacement fund. Every year, we put money into the budget, knowing that this vehicle's gonna last X years, when we have to replace it, the money's there, we go buy it. We don't borrow the money. What we have become is a debtor nation, so we have gotten in the habit of going out and doing something, and then borrowing money to pay for it. I think if we got in front of this, judicial building, I'm using that as an example, we put the money away, and by the time it comes time to do it, we may not have it all, but we're gonna have a huge portion of it. So we'll have a new judicial area to start with, and as we have a building fund growing, we're, we're collecting as we go, so the money will be there. And I, we, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit, but that's what I proposed for the animal shelter, you know? That if we identify funding from sales of other property and stuff, and we put it in the fund, by the time it comes to build it, you may not have to borrow any money, okay? You can get everybody on board if you didn't have to borrow money to do it, okay? Um, so, those things, the roads, this is what I propose, if it takes ten million a year, we're not gonna find six million next year, okay? But what we should do is to reverse, we should also have, uh, thinking about that, we wanna get to ten million, and we're at four, so maybe next year we budget for five, maybe the next year we budget for six, and maybe we go for eight. And, and then people say, "Well, but we're already behind," that's because how many years did we go without doing any? You know, it was none, we, we went years with not putting a dime into road resurfacing. So, I think instead of saying it's gotta be all or nothing, if we come up with a plan that says, "We get to zero here by putting this much down a year, and if it takes us five or ten years, or, or however we do it, we can do that." Uh, road resurfacing, in my mind, is, is maintenance, you know, that's not capital improvement, that's an ongoing, forever thing, it should be in the budget. It shouldn't be like, "We wanna build a new building," you're not gonna do that every year. So, those are just, you know, some of the things that, that, um, that, uh, I think if we do this, same thing with the landfill, we know the landfill's gonna need to be dealt with, it's not tomorrow, so we don't have to solve that problem today, but it's gotta stand in front of us, and if we've got twenty years to solve the problem, is it better to do it one twentieth at a time? Or, or do we wait until we're five years away and try to do it twenty percent at a time, you know? So, um, that's what I'm thinking when I talk about long-term. So, I can support both of what you're saying, based on that, I think if we came up with a phased-in, you know, because we've also talked, the county's growing, there's new, new commercial construction every day, the tax base is building without necessarily raising the rate, the base is creating more revenue, uh, the money should be there if we have a phased-in approach as the growth continues to come. So, again, that's the general thing, I know by the time you get down into the details, that's what this guy's for, is to get down into, this is what we need to do. But, uh, I think road resurfacing, Ozella Road, those kinda big capital projects, the judges facility, all that can be mapped out in advance by saying, "Here's what we're gonna do." And, so I just said that as an example to give you an idea how, if I'm supporting Scott's point, how, how we do that. So I think in that, we've identified what the project is, how we fund it, and how we move forward. Would you agree with that?
No, I, I agree, and, you know, we need to go ahead and, and I think put a, a, a group together to start debating on, or, you know, planning on, on what, what, how we're gonna build that, or where, where we're gonna build it, you know, whether we're gonna, um... But again, it's, we're gonna have to do it sooner than later, and we've gotta start planning for it now, so, I, 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 I agree with that.
Ruthie, you wanna comment on Scott's point?
Um, I agree with him, I, um, the courthouse, I, our administrator, the engineer side of him, had suggested early on to me about, you know, doing it properly over the parking lot, I think you'd said, you know, doing something long-term that way, which really made sense to me, instead of putting all this money into, I know we're already doing it, but I, there's some things I wish I could go backwards and revisit, but we can't, um... So I agree, I also am curious to see how the constitutional officers that, okay, they say, "Oh, they would have to return this much money because maybe they had employees, we budgeted, they budgeted for employees, and they didn't hire or fill those positions, so that money should be kinda coming back." But then they spend it, how do you, um, govern that? That would be a, a question for me, because that's gonna slow down that fund, and, um, and really, really having a, a real plan for our infrastructure and our future, because if, you know, I always say I have three more years, and, you know, they're like, "Slow down," no, I only have three more years, because you're not guaranteed, like you said. And if we do it properly, and it's logical, the next group coming in is gonna be like, "That was, that was pretty wise." So, that's what I mean by, you know, I tease, I, you know, always wanna give one laugh out there just to break the tension, but, um, that's what I mean by the unity, because I can go behind that completely, but then I just see those flaws that also need to be addressed. We have to be realistic.
Well, without getting into the, to the weeds of it, generally speaking, besides the program, there has to be a funding source or way of getting there, we've talked about, are you in agreement with that?
That's what I'm saying, I, I first said, I agree with what you're saying, except I don't understand how we can govern some of that, um, money coming back to us for that fund.
Well, that's a great point, I, I'll just put this in, I, and again, I remember this very well, especially when I get lectured, and I remember Janice Warren coming in, uh, coming in and saying, when she wanted, needed work done to her building, she goes, I think it was our first year in office, and she said, "You're supposed to have it, you're supposed to have it, 'cause I've been giving you money all these years, and you're supposed to be saving it for a new building for us, and it's been spent." So, I think a lot of it's about re-establishing trust, you know? If those constitutionals know, if the sheriff wants a new building sometime in the future, he's gotta have trust that those, those funds come back, go to a building fund, you know what I'm saying? We can't tell them that and then spend the money, okay? So a lot of that has to do with, with, uh, everybody having buy-in, you know, the consti- we're all in this together, the constitutionals have to trust the commissioners to do what they say they're gonna do. Uh, I think in the past, we've had that, and I appreciate the, the people that are still doing it, and that's why I think it's important to know, all the constitutionals know, that we've earmarked the money from that for the new judicial system, okay? So, so if we can all get on board, and we can tell people that, 'cause the first thing people ask you is, "Where's money coming from? Where's money coming from?" So, if, if we identify that, so, so far, I hear two people are on board with that one? Who wants to, I'll, I'll let Jeff go, you wanna go, Holly? Do you, uh, sticking with these two points, is that something you can support or not, or add to?
Absolutely, um, I also like the fiscal prudence approach that you've been eliminating, um, I have a, a clarification question, when those constitutional funds come back to us, are they all going into one pot? Or are they gated for their use of a new?
My, my understanding was they're all going to one pot, because we might end up with whatever, that, that's what I thought.
That's, that's what I would assume, because it's a, it's a lot that we have to gather to do a new courthouse, and then...
Well, with that courthouse, you know, we've gotta build a, we've gotta put a building, a building that's gonna house them all, okay? Look, the, the annex building, I was in there yesterday, it's terrible, needs to be tore down, it's just, it's just a wreck. I mean, so we've got to, you know, all that money needs to go into one pot, because, you know, you have tax collector...
I was hoping that was the answer.
Yeah, tax collector, property praiser, all of them are gonna have to go into this building plus a judicial, uh, assistance, so...
Yeah, I was hoping that was the answer, I just wanted to...
Yeah, and, and again, um, you know, and I hope this board's u- unified, uh, when it comes to budget time, and these, uh, constitutional officers that are not giving this money back, and all of a sudden, they're wanting buildings, and everyone in Austin, we look right at them and say, "No," okay? And this is why, 'cause you took that money, you spent it, okay, on shiny objects, uh, so you could drive around in, and other things, versus, uh, planning, uh, along with the, with the, with the commission to, to, to do these things in the future.
Will you lead that charge?
Absolutely, you know me.
The only, the only thing that I'm a little concerned about is simply that we're, we're going backwards on the road resurfacing. Because we're still digging, you know, the first thing you should do if you find yourself in a hole is to quit digging, then I feel like the longer-term approach of trying to get up to...
We haven't approached that yet, though.
Yeah, kept, uh, breaking even is that we're, we're still digging.
So I wanna spend a whole, I wanna spend a whole segment on road resurfacing.
Well, we, we can, I just wanna make sure we...
Yeah, I do understand, I understand where you're coming from, and, and making it more palatable to citizens to edge it up, I totally get that point of view, I'm just a little concerned about still digging, but...
Well, and again, we all know this, but let me just restate it again, um, road resurfacing is one of those things that really just shows human nature, okay? If I live on a road that's really bad, and I've been yelling for years to have it resurfaced, road priority is my top, road resurfacing is my top thing. So today, they resurfaced my road, and they come to me and they say, "Are you willing to pay higher taxes for the next ten years?" No, I got my road, you know, so, so that's, you know, we just have to stay focused when I talk about the long-term, because then the answer is, "Well, maybe you won't be here, but that road now will be taken care of, you know, into the future." Any, any other comments on those two things?
Yes, they're a hundred percent on board.
So they're on board, okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I do have some comments, I'm debating whether to say a couple of them.
Go right ahead.
Uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Carnahan, uh, on, um, planning for, um, and executing, uh, those plans for improving, repairing and improving our infrastructure. I disagree with, um, having to, uh, cut projects to make that happen. This year, we passed a stormwater, uh, MSBU that, uh, I believe just rough numbers, I think, generate somewhere in the neighborhood of about six million dollars, uh, county-wide. And what that's doing is that is replacing, uh, a million dollars, roughly a million dollars, from gas tax money that was being used for stormwater issues. Uh, it also left somewhere in the neighborhood of about five million dollars in public works budget that was previously being used for stormwater projects. So, there is money in those two funds, um, that can and should be starting to get set aside for some of these projects. That is found money for both of those, uh, both of those areas, but gas tax and public works.
Randy, and I'm just, don't, I'd g- agree, but if I'm not mistaken, we took that tenth of a mill off, so that million, that, that money's gone, correct? And we, and we took the other for you.
A tenth of a mill off, I also remember that you bumped, and, and he's right, there's just one, I don't, I don't wanna quote numbers without having numbers in front of it.
Right.
We took a million dollars and we increased road resurfaces from three million to four million.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, there is additional money there, I agree, uh, the thing that we have to be careful of is, is since this is a, a stormwater utility, uh, and, you know, money can be moved, but the question is, is do you wanna use it for other purposes, or do you wanna use it for the intended purpose?
No, I absolutely wanna use it for the intended purpose, I'm not talking about using the stormwater
Yeah.
fee or MSBU for anything other than stormwater, it's, otherwise, we've lied to the public.
That's right, no, no, I'm talking about the found money.
What, what I am suggesting is that there is now found money in public works budget, uh, that I'm sure that they, they've got ideas on what to do with it, but make no mistake, it's found money. It was not there last year, it's there this year. That money was never there, available for projects such as Ozella Trail repair. So, maybe what needs to be happening is maybe three million of that each year for the next few years, while we're planning to do these major repairs, or maybe you do a third or, or, uh, fifty percent of the repairs over the next couple of years, and then you do the next fifty percent, uh, but, three million dollars or whatever number that, you know, that, that Larry and the crew can make it work, gets set aside, uh, to do that Ozella Trail repair. Uh, that's where I would suggest that we find the money, uh, we've alre- we've created this MSBU, this stormwater MSBU, yes, in the first year, the funds are there to take care of existing things that we're already doing. But more importantly, what it does is it sets in place a tool so that different basins around the county, um, can be addressed individually, and we don't have to address them county-wide. I mean, that, that was my understanding, is that, is that it's, uh, yes, it takes care of the funding mechanism, um, initially, or for today, but it sets this, uh, this tool in place. So, and yes, I agree with Randy that the, the million dollars that was, uh, uh, found money, if you will, in the gas tax, it was previously being used for stormwater issues, um, that that went into road resurfacing, that's where it should go into. But the money that I was, that I was looking at was for Ozella Trail, and I think we should look to, uh, that found money in the public's work, public works budget, uh, specifically for that project. You know, there's two other roads that I, I think that, that every, I, I think everybody would agree on, that over the course of the next twenty years are gonna need to be expanded... that over the course of the next twenty years are gonna need to be expanded. There are two capacity projects. That would be Croft and Venable. Uh, I think those, or you could add in there Rock Crusher. You know, you, there are a number of county roads that, that need to be widened. Croft is, Croft is the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about because it's a huge price tag. But if we know that it has to be expanded, let's have a plan. You know, DOT, as, as Ron said, um, DOT doesn't build roads. If they decide that a new road needs to be built, they don't, you know, they don't just build it and say, they don't say, alright, we're gonna build this road and come out in the next two years and build it. It's a twelve, fifteen, twenty year process uh, to get that done. Croft Road's gonna be a monster for us. Let's have, let's have a, a plan that will get that done. Venable is going to be a, 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 a project, but with the uh, the new planned communities that are going on in that neck of the woods there, uh, that road is gonna be absolutely covered up in traffic. I think there's um, I think one, one of the developments alone is nine hundred plus homes.
Seventy-three.
Each, each home is, one, two cars, two and a half cars, two and two-thirds cars, wha- whatever that crazy number is. Uh, that's a lot of new cars on Venable, Rock Crusher, and that whole area. We don't have a plan. I assume we don't have a plan to widen it.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Whatever happened to your, you know, you brought up uh, a while back about, hey, uh, of us having a, putting a list of roads together that we needed to do and, and put a plan in place.
For the MPO.
Yeah.
That's what.
Is that, that, yeah, did we do, did we do, did we put that together to take it to the MPO, or we haven't done that yet?
I don't, I don't think that ever, I don't.
We need to.
Did we ever submit a list? I know that Hernando County.
Yeah, we did submit a list.
Okay.
They've been added on the MPO.
Okay, alright. I wasn't, wasn't sure, because that, that was an anticipation of some type of large federal infrastructure bill passing, and if that happened, um, Hernando County had their wish list, and, and that was when I suggested we should also.
I would think that Cardinal needs to rank up there pretty high, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Cardinal was on the.
I mean, the four, every four ninety-one.
I haven't seen Croft or Venable on that MPO list.
Croft, no, I, I can't remember if Croft's on there or not. I'll get you the list.
Do you guys remember, anybody who was involved in campaigning at the time remembers the word. What's the road with the traffic light out on four eighty-six? Um, uh, gosh, just, I wanna say, it starts with an O.
Oh, yes.
Ottawa.
Ottawa.
Do you know how we got Ottawa? Because we didn't have the money to do Croft.
Right.
And FDOT said they wanted a connector between four eighty-six and forty-four, so that was Ottawa. But you don't even have any signs telling you how to, how to get through there, right? And here's the other interesting thing, talking about long-term planning, I remember this before Randy. They knew they were gonna have to do four eighty-six, I mean, uh, Croft Road, and there's a bank on the corner, right there. And that bank went out of business, right? And there was the opportunity to buy that bank and, and acquire that property, and instead, the county reissued new building permits for that and let them expand that bank, so now, if Croft is ever widened, we're gonna have to buy that bank or the gas station on that, you know, to do it. Uh, this goes back to the bypass around Crystal River. For years and years and years, Citrus County was buying land around Crystal River to build a bypass. Then they started selling it, cuz they said, we're never gonna build the bypass, so all that land now was resold. Now they're talking about more bypasses again, you know, so it's, it kinda comes down to, I think one of the things that we should do, this goes to senior staff. I think that um, there should be an orientation for new commissioners, that, that, cuz I would've loved this, that somebody said, you know, ten years ago, the county had this plan, and this is what happened, and five years ago, this is what happened to it. Because we just don't end up in this space by accident, and especially, how are people gonna know ten years from now what our ten-year plan was? You know, I have a suggestion about funding, and then we'll go on to the next commissioner. Keep, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah.
I, I was, uh.
Well, that was just the first one.
Yeah, I'm not done. Um, I would, uh, I understand your um, uh, your healthy aversion to debt. Uh, but I would suggest that um, the county's ability to borrow money um, at a very low interest rate is a tool that can be used. Doesn't, doesn't mean it should always be used, but it can be used uh, for um, projects that are going to have to be done. And uh, the cost of completing those projects is only going to increase greater than the amount of the interest rate that we would, uh, that we could borrow at to pay it. Um, I think that, that's a, uh, the ability to borrow money is an effective tool uh, in business, and I think it can be used in government as well. Again, very cautiously, but I think uh, I'm not, I am not a hundred percent um, opposed to borrowing when we need to. If it, long-term, you know, these are, uh, we're, we're building structures, government structures that are designed and built to, you know, to last a hundred years. So, if, if it, if it, uh, if it is going to save the community money for decades down the road, then I think it's an effective tool that we should consider. Building a new courthouse. I had suggested at one time in a private conversation that I thought we were probably, um, we were probably looking at a thirty million dollar project. That was exactly what I was told.
Yeah.
You'll be lucky to build it for sixty, was the answer.
Right.
I um, you know, there've been a couple um, very high-profile news stories recently. One of them was the sheriff, um, sheriff's office going out and arresting, they had a list of um, twenty-five people that they were going after for trafficking, uh, not, not possession, but trafficking fentanyl in our community. They ended up, on the first day, uh, they ended up getting, I think, twenty-four of the twenty-five. And if you, if you didn't read uh, the article in the paper, you really should go back and read it. Because what was, what was interesting and infuriating to me were the number of felony arrests or felony convictions of the majority of those people. And we're not talking one or two felonies. Eighteen, nineteen felonies, seventeen felonies, twelve felonies. These are people who have made life decisions um, to be a cancer in our community. And I don't think that we can build enough courthouses, enough courtrooms for felons, repeat felons, to walk through the front door and turn around and walk right back out the back door. So, I've got a, I, I, I was, I was very, very frustrated in, in reading that. Uh, that these are, these are people who have decided that they're gonna continue to traffic this poison uh, into our communities, and they're walking right out the back doors again. I guess it was last week, week before, um, a young man that, that I coached in youth football. I got to know him very well, uh, was shot and killed. Again, to read that, that one of, one of the uh, alleged uh, murderers uh, is, is a convicted felon. Again, somebody who um, um, is another who is making a decision that that's what they're going to do in life. I've got, I, I've got a, I've got a real issue with um, these same folks. Like, like I said, the, the repeat felons walking in the front door and right out the back door again. And we need more police officers to go out and arrest more uh, drug traffickers or more felons. Uh, that requires more resources. We gotta build more buildings. We gotta build uh, more infrastructure for them to walk right through the system.
And what's scary is the states want to close down prisons.
Yeah. No, um, I'm um, probably some of that I shouldn't have said, but I'm very angry about it.
No, I mean, your job is to say what's on your mind, man. That's what you get paid for, you know, so, uh, let me.
Can I ask a question to you?
Oh, sure, sure.
So, what are you thinking about that? What do you think the future, do you think remote courthouses? I mean, wh- what do you, when you say that, it makes a perfect sense that, you know, you have these repeat offenders that we're gonna have to build the courthouses for to, you know, get more judges, to handle the caseload, but what, what, what's our option? What's our other option?
I don't know. I don't, I don't have a solution for it. I, I don't see, um, you know, I don't know if it's, uh, and it's certainly nothing that we're going to solve, but I, I don't know if it's sentencing guidelines that are the problems. Um, I don't know if it's um, um, too soft on repeat offenders. You know, if somebody makes a, makes a mistake and uh, goes, ends up in, in, in that situation and ultimately serves whatever their time or sentence is, but twelve, fifteen, eighteen times, um, hard stuff. Stuff that's killing people, right here in our community. And then, then we're told, we need another sixty million dollars so we can build new courtrooms to do the same?
Well, and I'm not being fresh, and, and this isn't something we're gonna solve, but this is a very forward-thinking idea that you're mentioning, like, okay, you're gonna, we're gonna have to do this because this is the trend. We see this. Every small community, every large community has these repeat offenders, and the government is having to, to, to facilitate the caseload. But it sounds to me like the only forward-thinking to do, other than building the courthouse, is to build a prison. You know, I'm, I mean, I'm not being fresh, like, this is the trend, and we're finding that we're housing people extra long and at, at expense to us. So, we might need to think about where, where our county is going, and where can we make the money to support this awful trend that is happening?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's either gonna cost us money, or we can make the money.
A lot of this, I'm sorry, Randy, you have.
Uh, the only thing I would mention is, is this, the, the county has excess prison capacity. In my opinion, the pri- the jail was overbuilt when it was built.
Okay.
Right now, we currently have three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five inmates that are county inmates. There are eight hundred cells over there, which is a lot. It's currently used by the private operator, and we get a percentage, we get a certain amount of that, but they house Virgin Island prisoners as well as US Marshal prisoners. But there's an abundance of, of capacity for uh, jail capacity. That is not an issue. I think what, what's being discussed is, are the, and this is a court matter, but are the sentences that are given, cuz after one year, they go up to state. They agreed a week ago, within the last couple of days, I think, they bumped their number back up to ten. But we were housing about seventy additional inmates because they were only taking two a week.
Right.
Okay, but after twelve months, they go to state prison if they get a sentence longer than twelve months. Uh, the thing we gotta watch is, is that the state legislature doesn't up that number to eighteen or twenty-four months because that, because they have, as Commissioner Carnahan indicated, they've closed two state prisons, okay? They have not been able to get the staffing, which is a problem in the industry. But we gotta be careful that they don't offload state costs on a local.
Here, here, we've been, and totally understand your frustration. I, I agree a hundred percent with you. But the problem is, uh, this board is deemed to uh, give the space to the uh, constitutional officers. Um, and unfortunately, the county's growing, more people's coming in, so we're gonna have to. But this board, whether I'm here or not, okay, I could tell you the fights are, the fights, we, you know, Small County Coalition Executive Committee, you know, in Tallahassee not long ago, and, you know, on the phone until eleven or twelve at night, having these conversations, because there's a lot of rural communities that depend on these state prisons for uh, employment. Uh, you know, you go to North Florida, things like that. But make no mistake, it's coming in the very near future, where they are closing these prisons. And what's going to happen is, we are going to be housing them for twenty-four months, you know, instead of a year, it's gonna be two years, or it's gonna be three years. So, that is going to be pushed on, that cost to the county. I mean, it, it is coming. I, I, I see the writing on the wall, so we've been out there, and I encourage you uh, to speak with, you know, Wilton, with Ralph, and, and every other legislator up there about this, because I'm telling you, they, it is coming. Um, and, and you know, we, we fought it heavy, was on the uh, phone with the chief warden of, of the state prison system. But that's coming, so that's gonna be another cost that's pushed down to us, and it uh, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of things that uh, they, 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 they're gonna push on us, and uh, that, that's, that's a huge cost.
And there's a double whammy to this whole system, which we're housing them, we're paying for them, we're holding them, and yes, a year, they're supposed to go, but then, so it's costing us local tax money to do this. They don't get credit for that year they're sitting in our jail. Then they go to the state prison, and it costs us as taxpayers to house them for their whole amount. Eight, say they got two years, they get eighteen months. So, we're actually paying for that prisoner for two, two years and, and um, how many months is that? Eighteen, twelve, six?
Thirty, thirty months, forty, thirty-two months.
So, it's costing us twice as much.
Uh, let me clarify a little bit. Uh, until they're sentenced, okay, uh, they have a status in the jail. Whether they can bond out or not, that's a decision the judge makes based on what he believes, he or she believes is the uh, you know, what the risk is to society. Okay, if they can't bond out, they stay in prison or the local jail until uh, the trial happens and they are sentenced. Once they are sentenced, the, the number does come off of that, if they got ten years, for example. Once they're sentenced, then it comes off of that particular amount.
Not while they're sitting, while we're holding them.
I'll check on them.
No, I'm telling you, I just had the meeting, and the judges told me, and so did the public defender.
Okay, but now we're really getting into the weeds.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying, there, there is a money problem. It is a future.
Well, here, here, here's the money problem. How many of you around this table know what Citrus County citizens pay every month to house inmates in Citrus County?
No, I do know that amount.
It's a million, and we cut a check for over a million dollars every month.
That's about right.
For the jail.
Yes.
I don't think the average citizen in our county knows that, okay? So, that's twelve million dollars a year that the citizens are paying just for our county jail that's underused, okay? Um, everybody know what, everybody ever hear Waldo or Lottley? When you drive through there, what does everybody do?
You better slow down.
You better slow down. Why? They don't pull out and slap you on the hand and say, don't do that again. They write you a ticket. And they put a big sign up that says, warning, strictly enforced, all right? Everybody has the same rule, everybody follows it. If you're a convicted felon two and three and four times, and you're back out on the street, that's like saying, don't you do that again? Now, we don't, and all I'm saying is, where we have, what is our bully pulpit? Our bully pulpit is, we get to go out and talk to the citizens. How many of you in the last year have told the citizens what we spend at the county jail? Think about that, okay? So, when I tell people that number, their eyes just pop out of their head, you know? So, we do pay at the state level, but we don't write a check to the state, okay, cuz that comes out of sales tax. They do write a check to the county, and that's where it comes from. So, my question is, what will we do with an extra million dollars a month, right? Um, so what, and I think the judges work with us. I think the judges understand that they don't wanna, for all kinds of reasons, but they understand the costs involved, and they're, they're always trying to do the balancing act. And um, but, but it does, and it hasn't gone away, you know? This goes back to the war on poverty and all those other things. People have been talked about, you know, judicial reform and criminal reform and everything for years, but it has not decreased the recidivism rate where these folks go back out and read. So, until the citizens, that's what I guess I'm trying to get to, until the citizens speak up and say, we've had enough of this, Tallahassee or whatever solved the problem, um, all we get stuck with is writing the check and, and then telling the citizens, sorry, but this is what it costs. I, Randy, and the budget gives us a thing of mandates we're required to pay. It just infuriates me of the money that we take out of the pockets of Citrus County taxpayers and send to Tallahassee for stuff that we have no control over. The citizens need to be aware of that. Instead of just telling them, uh, I'm sorry, that's in Tallahassee's hands, I think we all should carry around that sheet of paper that says, here's the mandates that the state requires of your tax money. Here's what goes every year for things that we have to pay for Medicare, right? I mean, um, all these kind of things, so that's where we can come into it. And I just wanna come back to finish yours, and then we'll go on. And I just wanna come back to finish yours, and then we're going on the next one.
Okay, I got one more thing.
Well, can I touch on the, on the road thing and, and all this? Keep this in mind, cause you talked about the debt. I know, we're not gonna go out tomorrow and get zero debt. I said, that's a goal, okay? But think about this, Randy has a spreadsheet that shows you all the debt that we've accumulated, and what our payments are. And I talked to you guys about this before. I kept saying, the way we pay for this future stuff is when we take the money for the loan payments that we've been making, and we flop that over to something new we wanna buy. I brought this up under the animal shelter. When this building's paid off, you take that money from there, and you put it into the fund that's growing to build the animal shelter. Then you build it, we have no more debt. What could be done with the annual interest? And I agree with what you're saying today, I'll guarantee you, next month, the interest rate will be higher than what it is, is today. I think we're seeing interest rates, it's gonna be devastating. So anyway, uh, it doesn't hurt to plan, we all know pricing are going up. But just keep this in mind as a general philosophical thought. What if we took our debt payments, and as those debts were retired, they're already coming out of our pocket, okay? Um, and we moved them from debt payment, including interest, to a capital project, right? Then we, we could, we're, we're building, but we're building it on our dime, and the money that went into interest uh, is being used for capital instead of going out the window in interest. I mean, if we went back and looked at the, well, I mentioned earlier about the interest Randy saved us on, on bond refinancing. That's real money, that's money that we could have done something with. So, I know it's not gonna change tomorrow, but my ten-year plan is, I'd like to look back and say, hey, remember when the county borrowed two million dollars to renovate a building they didn't even own? And we're, and we're making debt payments on that? Well, we're paying it every year or every month, but what happens now when we move that into another capital fund? Whether it's roads, or buildings, or whatever. I, I would like to see us do that, and that's what I meant. I agree with you, tomorrow, we're not, and, and debt can be a tool. But the thing with debt can be, okay, but this is when I'll pay it off. You know, I financed it for twenty, but if I can pay it off in five, that, that's what I wanna try to do. You, you got a comment on that, man?
Actually, you know what, I'm gonna wait until you ask me, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna end up going too deep into what I'm thinking. But I wanna, I will say that I love what he, um, Jeff said about, it's a cancer. And I'm gonna come back to that theme, so carry on.
All right, so, next up?
Last, last thing I'll address, uh, as far as, um, roads go. And no, it's not the last thing, but, and then I'll get off of my, my soapbox here.
That's why we're working through lunch, Jeff.
These, um, these infrastructure projects, road widening projects, um, it specifically, the, uh, the capacity projects, uh, or the new public buildings projects. Those things are all required because of growth, because of new people coming here and building homes. We want them here, we welcome them here, uh, but they, uh, by them coming here, they're causing, um, these new expenses, these additional expenses. I am, um, I'll say it, I'm already in this deep. I will, uh, I, I'll, I'll tell you, I am rethinking whether or not it was a wise choice to adopt the impact fees at only fifty percent. Should our transportation and public buildings, uh, maybe even, um, uh, the, uh, public safety, should we have adopted those at a hundred percent? The sheriff, the sheriff's office is going to grow, not because of the people already here, but because of the new growth. And is the fifty percent number enough to cover, um, that growth? For transportation, and let's, let's just, i- if we just spitball for a minute, um, for the roads, the transportation impact fee. If that were adopted at a hundred percent, rather than at fifty percent, you could use that, uh, that impact fee money to pay the debts on the roads that we already have, that we're paying. If you were to do that, then you can save the money that is currently being used to pay those debts and put that money towards your road resurfacing. That will help us get to the, the ten, or fifteen, or twenty million dollars um, that is required to handle the road resurfacing. And again, you know, we're not doing anything at that point that we shouldn't be doing. We're simply making the new growth pay for itself. It's, that would make that impact fee number a very large number, I get it. But the numbers we're talking about are very large numbers.
But, and the weight would go off the, the current residents, it would go.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Somebody's gonna pay for it, it's either those of us here, or the new growth that's causing this.
And what's unfair, let me stop and say this.
I'm done.
No, no. Everything, everything you've said has been right on, okay? But here, here's where I'm with this. I absolutely agree with you. Impact fees, we pay to have a study done. The study comes in and says, this is what it costs. Then it becomes political, because then the commissioners go, well, let's just do it fifty, cause what's the other counties doing? That, that is such smoke and mirrors, because it's still being paid, it's just coming out of the general fund. Which means, if I moved here and paid impact fees, okay? Now, you're only charging the new guys fifty percent, and I'm still paying the other fifty percent, so I'm paying twice, right? Every year, right, instead of one time. So you're exactly right, but let's be real candid. Our number one goal is we'll leave here unified, that has zero chance of passing. And I'll tell you this right now, because if we say today, we're gonna move impact fees to a hundred percent, the phone will start ringing, and the emails will start coming in. And I'm gonna write down how long I think that'll hold up in a vote at the county, okay? Let's be realistic about it.
I'm gonna disagree with you about that, cause I voted with you on the impact.
I didn't say, I, you know.
No, 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 I'm not take, don't take it personally, I'm not.
Let me finish talking. You're already saying that I'm thinking about individual people. I'm saying, this vote may not come up for a year or two. I'm just saying that the people that, that always put the pressure on county commissioners to not adopt impact fees at the whole level, will start doing that again. And, and, and that'll become a campaign issue. Uh, that's what I'm just saying, is that's something that if we pass today, that we, but you're exactly right. I mean, we're, we're just passing that off on the future people.
No, and you're right, you're right, and, and that's what I'm saying, you were right when I voted with you, too. And it was the hardest vote I ever did, truly. But it was the right thing, and if we can just continue to be that brave, we can make a difference.
Well, here's, here's the way I would explain it. We just did a study for utilities, okay? And this, and the consultant came back and said, this is what you need to charge for your utilities. Would it be fair to only charge people fifty percent of their utility bill and make all the rest of the county residents pick up the difference? It wouldn't, but we do that with impact fees, because it's political. And, and, you know, anybody who's been in this job knows, that's why certain folks don't call me anymore. Because I just say, thank you very much, and that's it, so, but, but I agree. That's what we have to do, when we talk about political fortitude. You, if you think that's the right thing to do, you gotta be able to stick with it. Yes, sir.
Didn't the, um, legislator pass where you can only go up a certain amount on impact fees?
Yeah, it has to be phased in if it's more than a certain amount.
Yeah, so you'd have to start phasing that in.
Well, I don't remember what the percentage is.
I don't know if we fall within that.
Yeah, I don't either, but I'm just saying, I mean, if that's.
Depends what's your percentage of the inquiry is to.
But I know that, uh.
Desire, we can research it.
Again, I would just go back to say it's that phased-in approach, instead of going from, you know, here to there, maybe, you know, phase it in.
Yes, I actually, um, um, I believe that it was, you know, I'm argued to at least keep it up at fifty percent. And I wanted to, I was hoping to go to at least sixty. Um, reason being is that the construction, uh, the builders in this county are a really important industry. And I have, I was here when the huge impact fees killed a lot of, killed bringing Target in and stuff like that. So I remember all of that, um, but.
Can I just comment on that real quick? That again is smoke and mirrors.
Well, that's what, that's what the citizens.
Not, well, the citizens say that, you talked to Home Depot. Home Depot said, what the impact fees were for us, we made in one day. Impact fees have no impact on large businesses coming here.
But, but a business, well, thank you for clarifying that. So the business, um, you know, if you look at good business practice, when you have less supply than you have demand, then you raise prices. And I never want the, um, construction, you know, industry to be harmed by this. But we have people flooding to us right now. So it makes sense to bring that up to where they, you know, are actually paying for themselves. It really does, from a business standpoint.
I, I agree that every day that we delay doing this is money that's, that's unfairly being burdened with the rest of, of the folks. But if we leave here today with that being a goal, then, then staff can look into what, what has to happen. But for the next eleven months, you got my support for it.
And mine too, mine too.
So, okay, well, I got, I hear three that's, that's good for it, so we can talk about that. Is anybody, let me put it this way, put it on the list, is there anybody that would be, would object to, uh, relooking at the impact fee, uh, percentage? Anybody have a problem with relooking at it? Okay, so we can put that on the list that we're gonna look at impact fees, okay?
And one thing that I wanna take from what you said, we thought I was gonna talk, say something different, is my message, the message I got from what you just said is for us and for future commissioners, to be brave and to not let the calls get to you. And that's what I'm taking away from what you said, and I appreciate that.
And, and I agree with that, and what, and, and part of that, part of that is information. This, you guys know this, but I'll just say it again. My experience has been, the citizens of our county, when they sit down and hear this, hear the facts, they become understanding, okay? So if you just say, I'm raising impact fees, they go, oh, there you go, new tax, everything going back up. But if you sit and you say, did you realize all the things we just talked about, they go, oh, in Sugar Mill, years ago, we had to raise the water rates. It was, I, I mean, there was huge.
You didn't go to that office?
And I, and I sat down and I said, we had a thing, and I said, did you know this? Did you know this? Did you, oh, no, no, we didn't know that. And the vast majority of people, the summation was, I don't like it, but I understand it, and it's fair. And, and that's what reasonable people will come to. But if we just go, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had to go that way, cause that's what, you know, you have to have information to back it up.
I, I hope that, that as this story, or this, this discussion leaks out into public, that people understand, or, or at least told, what we're looking at, what we're facing is a sixty million dollar courthouse, minimum, is what it sounds like. Um, relatively soon. Uh, the real number for road resurfacing, yeah, it's probably somewhere's around twelve or fifteen million dollars. Uh, twelve, fifteen million dollars a year to sustain our roads. To get caught up, as backed up as we are, it's probably around twenty million dollars a year. This next year, we just approved it yesterday, we're putting four million into it. That's a drop in the bucket for what needs to happen. We have major, you know, Commissioner Carnahan's talked about it many times. Ozella Trail's probably a ten million dollar project. Fort Island Trail is another one that's going to need to be repaired. Um, we have big, big projects, and either the new growth is going to pay for it, or current residents are gonna pay for it. Somebody is going to pay for, you know, just in those few things we're talking about, close to a hundred million dollars. Where is all that money coming from?
I agree. Anything else?
Nope.
No, I mean, you, you, you're three for three for here. Well, let's see, um, you want more time to, you wanna go next, or you wanted to go last, it's up to you.
I can go next.
Okay.
Um, uh, in, in terms of looking at what we did last year, I think the runway hopefully is gonna come to fruition. Um, we'll see how that goes. Um, in terms of the couple things you said that I wanna, um, tag off for, for strategic plan and communications, which is what I brought up last year. Um, you said it would be nice if we had a new commissioner orientation and a ten-year plan that you could refer to. That's what the strategic plan document should do. It should be a very small book that highlights everything that we're doing. A vision for the future, what we wanna look like when we grow up, things like bypasses, are we gonna do small-town charm and protect that with bypasses, whatever? Um, but that gives us a living document that gets updated every few years, right? And it also promotes the, um, the citizens being able to tell us what they want us to be going forward. Cause communication is everything. They want to be heard, they need to be heard. And we need to use not only the leaders in the community, but also the average citizens to pull this document together. So fortunately, it looks like that's gonna happen. Um, I would love to have, um, unity on, on the need for that, and I thank you for your trust. Um, I would like to ask, um, Scott if you can, um, just ruminate on it and come up with an answer later, but.
I tell you right now, I, I don't, I mean, um.
May I, may I finish? I wanted to ask you, um, in everything that I'm about to say, when you think, give it time to think about it, and I want to know, what would, what would success look like for you on that? What would make you happy to be part of the, the unity to have the strategic plan done? Because I really think it requires all five of us being super on board with this to get full buy-in from the community. Um, secondly, um, boy, after a year of several being flamed meetings, most particularly stormwater, my big goal that I think is entirely achievable, um, well before my term is out, is to have a commu- a better communication from the county to the citizens. Um, I don't think any of us enjoyed the stormwater meeting. If I was able to do to what I would like to have, if I could reduce that pain by ninety to ninety-five percent, would you not be happy with that? And that goes back to what you said, is that when you sit down with the facts, people are like, okay, I don't really like it, but I get the need for it, right? Really good communication, as we're growing so rapidly, and our, all of our individual workloads are going up. If you present c- communication ahead of time, in a really factual, easily digestible manner, not the god-awful thing that the, um, the property appraiser sends out. But, you know, I keep going back to infographics, you know? If you communicate clearly with citizens, that really cuts our workload. And the very small cost to do that is going to pay dividends over and over and over again with a ha- overall happier population that feels listened to, that feels like they know what they're, what's going on. And it reduces staff time on chasing down. So, you know, our big topics that we should have a professional take a stab at are septic to sewer. You get a lot of buy-in on the coast, you don't in the middle of the county, and that's where we're going to now. Um, road resurfacing, um, stormwater, sales tax, things like that. I know you cannot advocate, but you can educate on sales tax. And outside professionals that specialize in this can actually get that passed for us because of the nuanced communication levels that are going on. So, that, I believe, um, I'm gonna put on my wish list for the budget, um, for this upcoming year, an outside communications firm. Um, the number's small enough, we might even be able to get started on it prior to Oc- October first, um, to go ahead and put the bid process out and everything. And that, so by the end of this next budget year, we're gonna be in a whole different ballgame in terms of buy-in with citizens on what we're doing.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but let me, I, I, I'll just. The stormwater, to me, that wasn't, to me, that wasn't a lot of pressure, because, uh, you know, it had to be done. But I'll tell you something that I did during the stormwater. When different individuals would get up there and talk, and I had my computer in front of me, I'd pull their tax base up on what they paid. I mean, ninety-nine percent of the people there really weren't paying anything in taxes, okay? And they didn't wanna pay anything. So, whether you hire a, a outside communication firm, it, these topics are still gonna be hot because they don't wanna pay taxes, okay? And so instead of paying three hundred bucks, now they're gonna have to pay that, you know, they were getting out of the tenth of a mill, really weren't paying anything. Now they're gonna have to pay something, cause that's why we went there. So you, you can get an outside, uh, communication firm, and you can try to communicate with the people. But here's what I'm gonna tell you. People don't get engaged until it affects them. They don't care until it affects them. And, um, so to me, the stormwater, that wasn't painful. Uh, I mean, water rates was way, way more painful, uh, than stormwater. Um, but, but, I mean, I, I'll look at the numbers on, 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 on the, uh, on, on the, uh, outside firm. But, um, I am not a big fan of consultants, I'm not a big fan of going to outside communication. We're elected, um, to be that communication, and, 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 and take those calls and, uh, you know, relay information out there to people. So, but, but I'll look at the numbers, but, but again, to me, that's not a hot topic, it wasn't painful. It's a decision that, that you're elected to be made, you, and you gotta make those decisions. And again, so I'm not sure an outside, uh, company for, communicating for us is, is, is the way to go. But, but I definitely look at it.
And to be clear, it's not a consultant, except the very first part of it would be a, because a consultant is telling us how to do. And to be clear, it's not a consultant, except the very first part of it would be a, because a consultant is telling us how to do our job or what we should do. Somebody who actually executes the work is a different ballgame. So the first part is, would be an audit of how are we communicating right now? And then the second part would be, here's the plan to go forward, and oh, by the way, here is the communication package, you know, attacking a few of the hot-button issues. And just making, making it for a more collegial atmosphere among the citizens, because we didn't explain what we were gonna do with the stormwater money.
Can I comment? It wouldn't have mattered, I agree with Scott. The former commissioner, who is no longer here, once called the trim notices the boogeyman. Says, "You treat the trim notices like the boogeyman," and guess what? Why, why did we have that situation this year? Because the property appraiser wouldn't put that on the trim notice, right? Had the property appraiser put that on the trim notice, then we.
It would've been a lot better, yes.
Right, so next year, we won't have that. But remember, we're talking about, when people come in and say, "You've added," in most cases, what was it, twenty-seven dollars or whatever, and you hear people saying, "You've doubled my tax bill," you know? And I told you guys, when we got to the actual budget hearings of the people that get the trim notices, that pay taxes, the room was empty. And what's happened is, if you went from paying four dollars to paying thirty dollars, you're upset. If you went from paying six hundred dollars to six hundred dollars, you're pretty happy, you know? And that's, that was the situation. So I, I'm not saying I don't disagree with communication, communication is wonderful. But it's just been my experience that the people that pay attention, pay attention now. They go to the county's website, they call you, they send you emails. Other people, it's just like Scott said, until they get something in, and a lot of times, they get stuff from the county and they throw it in the trash. Because, you know, really, it's like, it's from the government, I don't care about that. But then they say, "Oh, well, this affects me, it's a tax bill or whatever," then they pay attention to it. So, and I always tell people, they think we get, "When will we have our first budget hearing?" Before June, like.
No, we'll have.
We'll start here, Charlie.
We'll have the preliminary budget discussion with you all, I think it's in March.
Okay, so in March, we're gonna start to budget. You know, every year in September, people will show up and go, "When did you decide this? When, when did you just come up with all this stuff? I just..." Because they just got their trim notice, that's the only thing they know. We put in the thing, so, so I guess what I'm saying is that it almost comes back to that old cliche of you're preaching to the choir. You know, the people that, that understand what we're doing, they pay attention, and other people don't pay any attention until it affects them. And Doug, I won't put you on the spot, but when we raised the landfill two dollars, how many phone calls did you get? A small amount or a large amount on two dollars, right? And, and so.
Is it a small amount or a large amount?
I mean, phone calls, large.
Large.
Like, twenty?
No, three hundred.
Ooh.
Yeah, and that was for two dol, a year, a year, right? So you're not, we all know, we're not gonna do anything to be happy, make everybody happy. I guess, and I guess where Scott's going with this, is I'm all for communication, but I don't wanna spend ten or twenty thousand dollars to communicate with folks that are still gonna be upset about a two-dollar-a-year increase. I just don't think that's, you know, if we can get our message out better, I agree. And I'll tell you furthermore, what I think, I agree with what you said, is that if somebody comes to us and says, "We want a golf cart community," we don't say yes or no. We say, "Go out and build support in your community, then come back and, and talk to us." Same thing with these sales taxes and things like that, I think it's better if that's a community-driven issue.
Absolutely.
You know, if the community comes to us and says, "We want this, we want this, we want this," then we're responding to their requests instead of us telling them what we're gonna do. That's where the communication thing can come in, because if you can educate people to the facts, they're more likely to come to you and say, "You know, I like this, I read about it, it makes sense to me." But, but like you said, I'm willing to try it, but I think the key has gotta be, if nothing else, I love the idea of passing it down to the next group of people and saying, "Here's what we talked about last year, is it still applicable? Or here's what we talked about five years ago, is it still applicable?" Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll just chime in very quickly on this. We have, and I would say, whether or not she was in the room, we have an absolutely brilliant PIO who came over from Visit Citrus, that naturally, that, they have a, the TDC or Visit Citrus has an outside marketing firm that they use. But no doubt, between Veronica's knowledge that she gained there and working with Miles, working with the TDC board, working with this marketing firm, I, I think that before we would go down the road of enlisting help, I would spend some time, maybe I'm wrongly suggesting that that hasn't happened, but I would spend some time sitting with Veronica and saying, "What are we doing wrong? How, what, what do you think we can do better? And is there funding, you know, what are those steps required to do that? What funding do we need to do that?" And then come back to the board and say, "Here's where we start. We've got the talent in-house, what we've not given that talent is the tools." And, you know, maybe, maybe she says, "You know what? I can do this much of it, but you really need an outside communications company to help us make this happen." So that's, that would be my suggestion.
Can I say something?
Let me, let me just address that, you're a hundred percent right, and it's kind of ironic that I'm the professional communicator in the room, and I didn't make that clear.
Irony is our business, actually.
So I already have had long conversations with Veronica. She is understaffed to do what I am suggesting that we do. And I don't like paying more taxes, I like living in a low-tax county. So the most efficient, my professional opinion is that the most efficient way to do this is to have an outside firm for one year. That's it, just one year to line us up, to go in the right direction, while we build a very tiny communications department, one or two extra people in Veronica's department to then take that, because my firm does that all the time. We'll come in, and it's a, it's a company that has a good in-house staff, and we'll do this really big, high-level work, and it's real work. It's, it is actual produced communication on things, and we hand it off, and we're there if they need us again on an ongoing basis, on a very tiny, ongoing basis. But we hand everything off to the internal staff and say, "Go forth and prosper." And so you're absolutely a hundred percent right, and I completely flood that, so thank you for bringing it in.
Not at all, not at all.
And before Ruthie jumps, just to segue to her addition, we do that to TDC. Every contract, every marketing campaign, it's always gotta be measurable. We're always asking, "What results do we get for this?" Right? What?
Oh, I would hear.
There you go.
Really quickly add that, I do have one new team member that was just hired, and it is Miles, so I didn't steal him from the Mr. Carol. So he has a lot of talent.
That's probably because I left over there, right?
A loss for them, a gain for us.
But I, I, again, I can support the idea of trying it, you know, and again, as long as it's measurable. If we, at the end of the year, we say we spent this and we don't see any measurable results, but to me, that, that's the key right there, so short-term.
I've never been afraid of measurable results, because I typically do very well with that, so.
Ruthie's gonna find out with her five-thirty-time certain public hearing. I meant, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
I know exactly what you're saying, I know exactly what you're saying, but we try.
That's right, you have a comment on Holly's?
Yes, and it's actually on my list, was part of my questions for today, because I'm trying to go in it with questions, so that I can start my year off, right? Rather than being a know-it-all, I wanna, I wanna absorb the education. And part of my question was, and it really hit home with the jail, is I was wondering if our Veronica's department could get something for us, those of us that have social media, you know, I'm not a big Facebook fan, but Instagram or Snapchat, and it be a uniform thing that says, "Did you know," and I had on there that, for instance, the impact fees, you know, if we had educated with stormwater, where I had wanted fifty percent and maybe more on impact fees, but just say, "This is why we did this," and then those of us that do have social media, we can educate our public for free. And I am, I am, I see where you're going, because that's your bailiwick. But my feeling is, we do have a platform as commissioners that we could use, but we need the help, and is that something that could be done? Because, you know, not just just saying, you know, "Do you know the jail costs a million a month?" And Holly's saying, "Did you know that if we did this, we could get, if we took money from, now that we have the stormwater, and now we can take the money from Public Works," and really just put that out there to educate. Because like you said, when I say some things to people, I said something to somebody last night that, with the whole big meeting we had yesterday, and I'm like, "Do you understand why I did what I did?" "No." "Well, this is why I did what I did." "Oh." And blah, blah, blah. And, and, and maybe I could've said it nicer, but you, you, if I say it to somebody and explain to them, this is why, they're like, "Oh, I didn't realize that." So if we could get a uniformed PR thing that we could push, social media-wise, I, I would love to do that.
You're absolutely right, because there are two aspects to marketing communications. One is the creation of the message, the second is how do you deliver the message? And paid media is what you're talking about avoiding, mostly avoiding paid media, which is direct mail, billboards, newspaper, boosted posts on social. We can avoid most of the paid media. So it really just becomes streamlining and unifying our message from the county commission.
And then that was part of my question is, if we, can we do this? And, you know, are we within the sunshine to do something like that?
Well, you have to talk to the attorney about that, but I despise Facebook, and that's why I'm awful.
I was fixing to say, did y'all go through ethics training? Because they'll tell you real fast, "No, don't do that, don't text, don't do any of that." Because I'm telling you, it's coming, where.
I'm not talking about texting.
I'm just letting you.
Instagram.
All I can tell you is, when you take ethics, for the new commissioners, when you take that ethics, listen to them. They're very good at what they tell you, okay? You go look at the two commissioners of Sumter County, what just happened to them. So I, I think social media is a devil, okay? I think it's ridiculous. The first concept of it was, okay, now it's nothing but a bash out there of attacking people and just doing nasty things. I don't want nothing to do with social media whatsoever. When it comes to building a company, I, I don't have any issues with it, just, again, I'm not gonna spend county money for outside people to do our job. That's where I'm at with it. Whether it's twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, that's twenty thousand or ten thousand that can be put towards something that the residents need, okay? So trying to put our job off on pushing it down to somebody else to try to communicate, that's, that's what I feel we were elected to do, and that's what, you know, I'll continue to do. And I'm not gonna push it down, whether it's hiring someone, we have in-house, we have in-house that can do the job, but I will not spend money for outside sources, I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Well, I'm confused what you're saying, because what I'm saying is using in-house, and is it within our, are we? Because I just did check the ethics question, that's what made me think of it.
I think what you need to be careful of is that when you post stuff on, tourism uses Facebook great, because we have somebody that monitors it constantly and responds to it. And you don't have the position where elected officials can comment, you know? They'll, they'll tell you that if you post something on Facebook and another commissioner even clicks like, that's a violation of the sunshine law, you know? So then you get into, you have to retain all that, you know? And, and I think what Scott's talking about, and we all have, be careful of this, is even texting on your personal phones. If you have people in the community texting you during a meeting, everything that comes in is public record, okay? So that's, that's why we just have to say, I remember as a meeting one time in Crystal River, and somebody wrote me a note and passed it to me, and a reporter walked up and says, "I want that, I want a copy of what was just handed to you." Because it became a public record when it was handed to me. So, so all this kind of stuff has to be done through the communications. I, I think that's where I'm on board with Scott, is that commissioners can go out and do what commissioners wanna do. You can put on your Facebook page anything you want, but I think for the county to say, "We support doing this," I think our Facebook policy says we don't do that, right? We have, didn't we adopt the Facebook policy two years ago or three years? And there we go, we're getting to the policy. I'm not gonna put you on the spot now, but I know we addressed that issue, because we had a commissioner that was putting all kinds of stuff on Facebook, remember? And we adopted a policy dealing with it, so maybe we can go back and look at that. But I see what Scott's saying, and I see what Ruthie's saying. So I, I think what we're saying is, get out and use every means. A great example of an idea is the gas tax, okay? Scott, how many times when people say, "We pay fifty," and I said, "Yes, we charge everything allowed by law for gas tax." And you know why? Because we get all that money back in SCOP. And when you tell that to people, they go, "Oh, that makes sense." But until they hear that, they don't know that, and that's the perfect kind of thing to communicate. So your question was, do you have buy-in on a one-year trial basis of seeing what it takes to put together something with measurable results? Is that kind of the summation of where you are? Scott, I would just float this by you. The way they sold me on the economic development plan is they stood in front of us and said, "We guarantee you, for every dollar we spend, we'll prove to you we brought three back into the account."
Mr. Chair, what I said is, I'll look at it, and if we wanna have stuff come back into us. But again, it's taxpayers' money being spent on the outside to do our job. That's where I'm at with it, okay?
So you'll look at it.
You were, I'll look at it, but we were elected to do a job, and that's to communicate with the people, okay? And that's what we do, okay? Answering emails, answering phone calls. Listen, last night, I know you're, my phone rang off the hook, and I answered phone calls until, you know, later, later, late in the night.
My wife said, "Can you turn your phone?"
Yeah, yeah.
Finally, I actually did. But, but again, I'll look at it, I don't have a problem with looking at it, but again, I've, since the day I was elected, and, you know, consultants and things like that, you know, I, I, you know, we hired Jamie Ghee to do a job, and he does a great job out there, but for years, for the first four or five years, we did it ourselves, because, but, you know, with, with the, Wilton leaving and out, I think we gotta have somebody up there. But again, I think that you're elected to do a job, and that's part of your job.
Sounds to me it's gonna be when you come up with a plan, it's how well you, how well you communicate it to the rest of the commissioners, so. But I hear everybody saying they'll take a look at it, so.
The last thing I had on the list is back to the cancer aspect.
What was that?
The cancer, is, I'm using the cancer metaphor that I'm tagging off of what he said about drug addiction, and also the other cancer is all of the, the shift to being much more of a nanny state nationally. And too many people, so if you look at human beings, look at running this like a business, human beings are either assets, or they're liabilities on our society. And I would say the worst kind of liability are those that are trafficking mass amounts of, what was it?
Fentanyl.
Fentanyl. So that's the absolute worst kind of, of cancer, but there's also people that are not getting a job, and they're, you know, pulling off the system. As you know, I've done a very, very deep dive into poverty in Citrus County, and we do have, so to cut to the last slide, I would say that I would propose, let's try to nip this in the bud as much as we can with our children. Twenty-six point seven, I think, percent of children in Citrus live in poverty. One zip code is fifty-six percent childhood poverty. And we all know what happens with gangs in cities, right? So the children that are raised in a gang environment, it is just like the mafia, you cannot get out. And it's the same thing with poverty. You go to any of these sand roads that has broken down mobile homes and one refrigerator for five mobiles, and that society of poverty, it's extremely difficult for a child to escape that while living in that environment. So CF, I would like us to hopefully work with CF, and this is, this is a big hairy audacious goal, to go back to, when was that, the aughts, I think that was a popular business term. We also have a lot of homeless in the woods, we have a lot of kids that are couch surfing. So I toured the Lake County homeless open-door facility that is run by LivStream, and I would like, big thinking here, is to have an open-door facility somewhere near the La Canto Government Complex in CF where any homeless person can get a hot shower, meals, do laundry, et cetera, and then intervention at that point. A lot of them have severe mental issues or severe physical handicaps, they need to go into Section Eight and have that intervention, but some of them just need a little bit, and they need an ear and a hot bed and a life plan to try to get their life back on track. Some of them are veterans. And so that facility is not a warehouse, it doesn't have any beds, it is simply a place, a safe haven for them to go to to take care of personal grooming and also have somebody do an intervention there. LivStream handles that for Lake County right now in the city of Eustis. We have the land, Eustis does not, they have housing outside. So going back to flipping the liability into an asset, I am. I am, I know some of you questioned this, I am very fiscally conservative. And my feeling is, is that the more liabilities that we flip to assets, because we're at a precipice right now, I think nationally. With too many people not being assets to the soc- to society, taxpaying, productive citizens. I wanna flip liabilities to assets. The way we do that is you have that, that portal, but then you have emergency, like two-bed pods that are literally the size of one of these tables, that has air conditioning and heating. A ten, a, uh, woman who was living in her car with her ten-year-old son in Citrus County did not go into the shelter, the women's shelter because the child was ten years old and he's a male, and he couldn't go into the women's shelter. So she would have had to put him as an unsupervised ten-year-old into the men's shelter. All of you parents, would you put your ten-year-old son into a men's shelter, homeless shelter? Okay, so she went back and lived in her car. So what those pods do is it allows them to have a safe, lockable place to sleep, they use the main facility. And it's like a one-week, two-week emergency shelter thing. And then you get them lined out, if they don't have severe mental health issues, you get them lined out into some sort of good life path. So you can, and I'm talking a very small facility, I do not want this big thing. Have some tiny homes where, okay, say for example, she just needs a hand up to get through a two-year nursing program at CF. She can be sponsored to have that tiny home as long as her grades are good and as long as she's going. And the Locanto school complex is right there for her son to go to, and other resources are right there. And then additionally, work with CF to have a, just a regular dorm for regular old kids that are going to CF and paying their way and going into the dorm situation, but also having, um, being able to sponsor, for example, kids coming out of the foster system. If they're going to CF and if they're, I will be the first one to kick their lazy butt out if they don't do well in school. Well, I'm spitballing here, Scott.
Can, can I just intercede, here, here's my issue with this, it kinda goes back. I, I mean, bless you for your heart for this kind of thing, but we have billions spent at the federal and state level for these various kind of programs. And until somebody presented to me that the people that you're talking about have exhausted all these other programs. What I'm gonna hear is, why is the county now stepping up and doing and paying for something that they're already taking our tax?
I'm not suggesting that we're paying for it, there, there are grants for that.
Well, but still, it's gonna take operation, and once, once, once a program starts, it never goes away, right? So that what we have to look at is, if, if there was a need out there that was not being met, but the, it, we ran into this with the food banks. And I, I'll tell you, here's where we're at, we have how much money left over from COVID? Because it was an emergency, and we have to give it out to people, cause they need it today, and we're years into this and we have people coming back and giving us money back, okay? So, the, the issue is, we're, we're told everything's an emergency and we throw money at it, and then in the end, it doesn't get used. And well, we got that money anyway, let's use it here or there. So I'm not saying what you're saying doesn't have merit, I would just be more involved. If you said, look, here's a list of all the programs and all these people I've talked about do not qualify for any of these. Then I could say, well, maybe we should get involved, but, you know, I, I think the best thing we can do, again, back to communication, be a clearinghouse and say, did you know this program's available? The county, uh, does federal programs that most people in the county aren't aware of. You know, that being able to help people with their rent and their utility bills and stuff, so I, I'm not saying, I know I have a well deserved.
This is a long ball.
I know, I know, I have a well-deserved reputation for being heartless and cruel and hard of ice. But, but, uh, but I just wanna say, uh, to me, it come, it comes back to. It, it just seems until you, we see that they, they've been through the funnel of all these other programs. You know, that, I just think the county should be the last local government to step up and do that, that's.
Well, I'm just, I am, I am trying, and, and all your points are very well taken, I'm trying to leverage the money that's already flowing to this issue. And trying to remove people from that bad environment, and they need a place to be removed to. How we pay for that is exactly which, that's where the rubber meets the road. But I would say that in a community that launched a state-of-the-art YMCA with no debt. This might very well be something that can be ra- you know, raised from grant funding, from personal donations, from all other things. And again, I'm not talking about a building this size, I'm talking about something really small and inexpensive, but safe. And it's near Livestream, and Livestream would end up operating it because this is mental health and poverty go hand in hand. And again, it nips it in the bud, you get the kids, because if, if they, if, what is the number one way to make money when you're, when you're poverty-stricken and you have no education? Drugs.
Yeah, but also, Holly, with all due respect, I've heard for twenty years, the way you save money in prisons is you intercede at an early age. And that hasn't worked. So, uh, you know, I mean, we all go for that, well, sure, I don't wanna end up putting them in jail, so let's intercede when they're, when they're ten. And, and yet you go back and you look, and people, you know, Jeff, you talked about not touching things you don't wanna touch, let's talk about. Statistics show, statistics will tell you that the number one contributor of people being incarcerated is how many parents they have in the home while they're being raised, okay? So how are we gonna make people have a two-parent home? How are we gonna, see, those are the kind of, getting back to the talk of the nuclear family, that's kinda out of our bailiwick, you know? So, we, if, if we can support people to get behind that kind of stuff, but, but all this, by the time it gets down to us, we're always told if you care about people, you'll put money into this, and we're always being sold, because in the long run, you're gonna save taxpayer dollars. And I'm just saying, history doesn't support that. And that was the argument I made to you before, I, I, I love that you're trying, I love that you think about that. But, you, you know, if we could go back and look, yeah, one person could, you know, ha- there's a success story here or there. The Path is a great example, I've heard so many success stories from The Path, and The Path is driven by private donations. You know, so, um, but again, it doesn't fit everybody, just like you said. So, I, I, I mean, that's where I am with it.
I'm, I'm very early in this idea, and I just, I wasn't even gonna bring it up today, that's how early it is, but I wanted to float it out there. Because I know y'all have the best interest of this community at heart, and you might be able to go, you know what, you had a point there, but if we do it this way. Then I would be on board with it.
I personally admire what you're doing, because what it comes down to, you did it with Scott. You said, I know you don't like this, so tell me what I gotta do to get you on board, and I see you're doing that with this, you know? You have to go out, you have to identify, I guess lawyers do this all the time, right, Denise? You have to anticipate what the other lawyer is gonna be asking you ahead of time, so that when, and you're doing it, what would be the objections to this? You start identifying that, you work it out, so, so I give you kudos for that, yes, sir.
Here's what I can tell you, everybody in America has an opportunity to do and, and make whatever they want. You ever tell you what I was sitting with poverty, I load them up on a bus, I drive around Citrus County in black diamonds in, in Citrus hills, hey, get your ass up and work hard? That's what you can have, okay? I, I've seen, I, I've seen these kids come out of these homes and they, they're millionaires, and, and again. It's not the government's responsibility, I'm not Joe Biden, I don't, a- and, and again, it's not the government's responsibility to start throwing money out, and, and we're, we're not going to curb poverty, okay? Laziness is a problem in life, okay, in Citrus County, I, I always hear too about how we got the highest, uh, unemployment. Well, that's cause we're a retirement community, okay, I mean, is, is there jobs out there people can get, good-paying jobs? Yes, you can go make fifteen dollars an hour now at, at McDonald's, okay? But, but again, bottom line is, uh, addiction's a problem, mental health, i- i- there's no doubt about things like that. But even, uh, you know, addiction, you see, uh, met, met a, met a person, uh, two weeks ago. Had everything in the world, her and her husband, got on drugs, hit rock bottom, okay? At Salvation Army down in Sarasota, uh, lost everything. Guess what she's doing now, she's running the Salvation Army for the region, because she decided to, to get out of that, okay? She decided to get herself back to, in order and get to work, but, you know, uh.
But the Salvation Army was there to help her facilitate that.
But it's outside, it's not the county's responsibility, it's the agencies that are in our community, that's their, United Way, Salvation Army. The Path, I mean, we can go right on down, though, that's their job, it's not the, it's not our job to do those things. And it's not the taxpayer's responsibility to put money in doing those things.
Ron, Ron said bully pul- pulpit, and that is what I am talking about with this, I'm not saying that the county is building this.
I understand, but I think, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna go ahead and be upfront. I think we're getting way off balance here, uh, on what we should be doing today, okay? I think we need to get back on task, I mean, if this is what we're gonna talk about, things that aren't really gonna happen, then it's.
We gotta have unanimous buy-in by the time we leave here, so you're gonna have to make that, I don't, I don't think we're looking at unanimous buy-in on this.
That's fine.
Today, on this idea, but in the future.
No, that's why I said, I wasn't even gonna bring this up, I just wanted to throw it out there as an initial run-by, to see what the feelings were on that, so.
Sometimes you have to, I think Jeff threw out the impact these as initial run-by and see what happens with that, so, can I, can I throw? You still have your, your points here, but this is something where I think the county can come in. This is not gonna fly today, it didn't fly ten years ago when I proposed it, but I still believe in this. It goes back to what both of you guys are kinda talking about. If I'm in a car wreck in Crystal River, follow me with this, I'm driving, I use Crystal River as an example. I was driving, I'm driving around in a car wreck and I caused an accident, and they call a tow truck for me, does the government pick up the cost of the tow truck? No, okay? If I'm in a bar fight, and they dispatch the sheriff's deputies to come and arrest me and haul me away. Does the government pick up the tab for the deputies to come and arrest me and haul me off to jail? Do I contribute anything to that? No, okay, so years ago, I proposed that, because the people that vote for us and elect us are the majority law-buying citizens, sitting at home, doing what they do, okay? And yet, they're paying for all the criminals that are being arrested. And I've always advocated, there needs to be a way to co- co- to do two things. One is, it's a det- it's a deterrent, but the other thing is, it's accountability, okay? If there's never accountability, if you can stay at home and not work and get paid and make more and have a cell phone and have cigarettes and all those luxuries that people that work for, and full healthcare, and all those things that come from people that work hard, why, why do it? Okay, so, my point was, let's say, the, the police department is dispatched to a hotel for a bar fight. Those people get charged for the cost of that call, okay? And the council was ready to go for it, and we got bombarded, we'll never come visit your city again, you're so anti. If I have a fender bender, you're gonna charge me for, you know, and again, it caved a lot to the pressure. But it still comes back to me that if I wreck a car and I'm at fault, I'm, I'm responsible, whether I have insurance or not. So why am I sitting at home, biding by the law, being a law-buying citizen and picking up the tab for all the people that don't? And we already do that in one way, and that's called the Drug Forfeiture Fund, remember that? So now we're looking at maybe helping with mental health by the Drug Forfeiture Fund. So why can't we explore ways to make crime less attractive in the fact that it hits people in the pocketbook? That goes back to subsidizing these kind of things that you guys are talking about. I don't have all the answers, but I can tell you, there will be a cry that you won't believe, people saying, you can't charge, that's what we pay taxes for. Well, no, if, if you're paying taxes and you're not being arrested on a daily basis, then you're, then you're not paying for it, you know, so.
You had a comment?
Yeah, there is a, uh, there is a mechanism already in place for us to, uh, to charge or to be reimbursed from inmates per day that they're in, in the county jail. Maybe we need to be looking at, are we collecting those fees, are we efficient at it? You know, are we leaning property, when, you know, are, are we being as aggressive as we can be? Because they're costing the county taxpayers a million dollars a month. You know, are, are, you know, are we, are we collecting, you know, pennies on the dollar from them? Or are we really going after it and saying, we're gonna, we're gonna recoup the taxpayers' monies because you couldn't behave yourself?
I, I, what I'd like to see is agreed to is maybe have the attorney, Denise and Randy, look in to see what options are available. Cause we don't wanna go down the road if the state precludes us from doing it or whatever, but there seems to be, they've done it with the, um, uh, Drug Forfeiture Fund. There should be some way to do, or are we enforcing what's already out there, are we exploring? Are we dealing with the programs and the projects that are already out there? Cause that's, that's what we need to do, we need to start, not this, just learning, you know, turn the other way, well, as long as, you know, I pay my tax bill, I don't care what happens. I think we need to be proactive on those kind of things, because it's gonna do both. If I know that I, I'm gonna be responsible for restitution or whatever, and the judges hold people to that, then, you know, might not be so attractive. So, I, I just have a hard time, well, I have to go out and shop for a cell phone plan that saves me money and people that don't have jobs get free cell phones, I just.
Or they have ten kids and don't get married, cause the government pays for it all.
Yeah, so I mean, we can't solve all those problems, but I think if we can identify what we can and, and focus on that. So, do you have anything else, right now?
No, I just want, I, um, I am, I wanna, um, tag off of what Ruthie said about. It's, uh, it's interesting to learn from y'all on the infrastruc- especially things like the infrastructure and stuff like that. I am in support of everything I'm hearing so far, but I am trying to bring what, just sort of the different things that I've been working on that tag back to my, like, my lifetime career, so.
Well, at the end of the day, just like Scott brought up, we're gonna look up there, we're gonna say, what can we leave here today? That we're unified on, that we think can be accomplished, maybe in a year, maybe in five, maybe in ten, and that's what we're gonna try to narrow it down to. So I've got Scott spoken to and Holly, Ruthie or Jeff, who wants to go next?
I just have pretty easy things.
Beverly Hills Pool.
That's off the list.
We've come to an agreement.
I'm just kidding.
That every time he's fresh. So, road resurfacing, I'd really like to talk about that, because actually, um, Mr. Hunter kinda gave me this idea and he happens to be here, um, I think he's sleeping, but, um. You know, we've talked about the system that we have the density in the grade, which works, right? But what, where it doesn't work and where it's gonna start not working even more is Pine Ridge. And it, it's not working in, in, uh, Citrus Springs, and even though they have the MSBUTU. What I wanna talk about is, when you have a road that is now a, a ten, but there's not, the homes on it, there might only be one. It's gonna, you had brought this up, that it's gonna cost more money to eventually, when, whenever we get to that road, it's gonna be four times the amount to fix that road. But what I, I always think, I'm always going to be the businesswoman. It always comes back to, you know, credits and debits, and, um, I'm thinking, if we made some of these roads. Come up with a system to fix some of these roads, then we're going to promote development on those roads. And the more development we promote on these roads, the bigger our tax base comes up. I don't know how to get there, but I would like to see somehow where, um, we make the road resurfacing also profitable for us as, as a tax base. So that's one of my things, and I need a lot of help with that.
Well, I, actually, I, I think you've already taken big steps in that direction. I think we've identified, the only thing our road resurfacing program needs is money. And I think if, if we agree today to some road mechanism to fund that, that, that will take care of it. And, because again, we, we've come to the conclusion that no plan is gonna fix everything without the funds to do it. And we're only getting the top level of the worst stuff, and the long-term stuff is not getting it. So, I understand what you're saying, but as I've talked to people, I said, the issue with roads is money, that's what it comes down to.
And, and that's, that's where we'll circle back to, there might be a point in order to make money, you have to spend money, and we need to spend the money on road resurfacing. That's probably the only thing I'm gonna really stress with, when it's time for the budget. But coming up with a plan and saying, this is a very appealing area, and we, my second po- item is workforce, workforce housing. And then I'll go into the accessory dwelling units, but this is a very appealing area for workforce housing. It's a part of the county that will be easy to get to, we're, we're gonna, you know, get new homeowners or, uh, multi-family situations. And, and I'm not opposed to borrowing some money, I know you guys aren't for that, but if you borrow a little but then down the road you end up making a lot, it, it will, it will work out. But, I'm not married to that, I'm just saying, we, if we could come up with a plan.
Let, let me, let me, I wanna throw something out, cause I hear this workforce housing a lot, okay? We have, we have, by, by Mattercrest, we, uh, redid some, um, zoning, so they can do workforce housing. Down in Sugar Mill, we did that too, but yeah, they, they, they're developing. But yeah, they, they, the developers hadn't, I mean, so we've already, uh, des-, or, um, redone some, uh, land and did some PUDs on workforce housing, am I right, Randy? And they haven't come in there and done anything with it. So, we have, you know, when I keep seeing these editorial about workforce housing, the county has done their part, okay? But then what these people have to do is they go apply for Section Eight funding and things like that, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong.
It's a state lottery system.
It's a state lottery system, so.
And if they don't hit the lottery, if you don't, they don't get it.
But, but we have already designated areas, okay? I know there's one by Meadowcrest that, uh, you know, the same, uh, kinda complex they built in Inverness, one down by Sugar Mill. So, so we have.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about that.
No, no, but I'm just, but, but I, I just wanted to get it out there, I'm not.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to get it out there, because we, we all, I always hear about how we don't do anything for workforce housing. Well, we have designated, uh, areas for, uh, for those things to be done. But again, they're not hitting the lottery and they're not getting, and they're not putting their own funding, uh, up to build those. But, but there's companies that have come in, uh, and we have, uh, given them what they, uh, asked for to do workforce housing, but yet they haven't invested.
And I, I think more of a private developer, like saying, that we've designated this area, there might be a little bit, we need to do a little something to make it appealing, put it on a silver platter to say, "We want you to invest into our county," and not, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to get to, is, is if we could come up with a plan and say, "This is a good area, the roads aren't that great, we might have to do a little something, or, um, infrastructure, something, and then be the salespeople, we're hired to represent our county," and say, not Section Eight, not, but, but, uh, uh, workforce, affordable, attainable, attainable housing that we can promote.
Apartments and stuff.
Is that not what, is that not what George Rousseau is doing in Citrus Springs now with Habitat for Humanity? Did he not just go in there and, and is developing a whole quadrant of that?
Right, but there's some people that aren't, are, are gonna be above that, just above that line, that they need an apartment complex or something, you know, there, there's always that little.
I guess, here's, here's my whole thing. It's not, and again, it comes back to just my nature, and that is, why is that the government's responsibility?
No, it's not.
Yeah, you know, if people, if, if this is available for people that, that need the Habitat-type homes, we designate, the county gives a list of property that's available for, uh, affordable housing or whatever. We do that already. We, we publish a list of saying, "This property's been designated for this type, this type of housing." I'm just keep coming back to why, with all these issues that we're trying to do, and I told you this before, the Chronicle editorial boards thinks workforce housing is a big deal. Not one single one of my constituents in seven years has ever listed workforce housing as an issue in Citrus County. Now, it might be, but to the people that talk to me and tell me what's important, that doesn't rise to the top of the list, okay? So, they come back and they say roads. They come back and say, and Ruthie, uh, and I know it's your time on this, but I just wanna plug this in. I always come back to say, "What's the core function of government?" Okay? The core function of government, I would say, is public safety. So we start with law enforcement, but does affordable housing fit into that? That could be, it could not be. The other one is EMS. We've heard from people, they want, when they call 911 and they need an ambulance, they want it, and the other is fire. And then transportation. I mean, you know, people have to be able to get on the road and get to where they're going to. So, to me, if, if we have ten dollars to work with, and we have pro-, and we have things that are twelve dollars, we have to come back and say, "What is the vital that we must do?" And then those kinda things are good to have in the back of our mind, but I don't wanna leave here today to say, "One of my," I can't get, leave here today and say, "One of my top priorities is to have workforce housing," you know? I mean, it's good, and we do the steps that we can to help those groups do that. But I don't think that's at the top of the core function of government. That's my own opinion, I, and I might be the only one with it.
Ruthie, can I, can I chime in for a second?
Can you help me out?
Yes.
Cause I'm not a great communicator, and I think I messed it up.
Um, you do not need to reinvent the wheel here. Eric Williams in Inverness knows the system, knows how the system works and can help us get there. Uh, the county still has several million dollars set aside for economic development. The way the lottery system, my very superficial understanding of it, the way the lottery system is won by these different applicants, is that the county, um, has to have some degree of skin in the game. And I believe the City of Inverness did that through, um, it was, it was paper money. It, it was moving numbers around through different credits and different things like that, um, that they, that they made it happen. But you have to have, you have to have the, um, the desire by the local elected board and administrator, um, to move that forward and figure out how to put that skin in the game. If the skin needs to be real money, we've got millions sitting there for economic development. I can tell you, um, from having a staff of my own in the private world, affordable housing or attainable housing is very real in our community.
Oh yeah, it's very real to me.
Um, I, I hear about it.
Yeah.
But don't you agree this, cause, I'm just wanna throw this out real quick, but don't you agree because of the values of, of the properties and homes have just gone tremendously through the roof?
Well, these aren't people that are looking for three, three-two homes with a garage.
I don't think we have the stock.
They're, these, these are people that, um, you know, that are, that are either sharing a home with parents or whatever it might be, because they can't, they can't find a place to go out and live on their own.
We don't have the inventory, even our Beverly Hills.
So my, my suggestion would be, and you're right, there does have to be, uh, uh, some degree of infrastructure improvements, but, but the, the applications score higher for the lottery system, uh, when there's, when there's county buy-in, when there's, uh, when there's, uh, I hate to keep using the term, but skin in the game by the county. And, uh, I believe that what you'll find out is that any real money or any real skin, if you will, doesn't have to be put in until the project's complete. So there's, there's not a risk of putting, putting public money up to help a project score higher, and then that project not coming to fruition. My understanding is that, that, that skin, if you will, those resources, get put in after the project's complete, and then the project repays that money back to, back to the county. Uh, you know, so, there's, there's a way to make it happen, and if the desire is there by the local government, uh, to do this, then you would see those projects happen in Meadowcrest, or you'd see those projects happen.
Well, can we take, do you, do you feel like what I'm putting out there, you're, you're, you're grabbing onto?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Holly, do you feel?
Can, can I give you, uh, tell you how it currently works, and if you wanna change policy decision, you can. The policy right now of the county is any, uh, contribution that, or anything that the county makes to, uh, housing comes through the housing division, through the state funds that come down from housing, okay?
But I haven't been really talking about, I'm talking about being, um, appealing to private investors that wanna invest to our county. And you guys keep, kept taking me down that, that trail, which, great, great, we can do that too, but I'm also trying to figure out, we have land that's sitting there, but there are, the roads or the infrastructure is terrible. Who wants to make that investment? You, you know what I mean? We have to kinda.
I think, I think to.
Put lipstick on the pig.
I think to, um, to go down that, uh, go down that avenue to try and, uh, try and build the infrastructure, to try and, um, uh, make it affordable for a, a private developer to build homes or to build apartments or condos, whatever it is that you've got in mind there. That is, that is much more public investment than is, than is needed, um, to accomplish what you want to.
Okay.
Ultimately, my, my thought is, what you wanna accomplish is, as you said, a greater inventory of affordable places to live, okay? However we can get there. And, um, my understanding, just from, quite frankly, from talking to Eric, he knows how to get this done, and, uh, is doing it in one of our cities.
It was sold out before?
There's, there's, you know, there, there's a way to do it with, with a, a minimal, uh, public investment, and that investment is returned, uh, i- i- is paid back over, over a period of time. Uh, I would talk with, uh, I would talk with Eric Williams, I'd talk with Joe Cappicelli. Both of them know this, know that, that system very, very, very well.
And we re-did a piece property for Joe, in Meadowcrest.
But the, the people that do those projects aren't even gonna bother with it, because they know that without county buy-in or county being involved in it, their application is going nowhere in that drawing.
Well, the policy question y'all need to make is, do you wanna use general funds, be it economic development or whatever, versus housing funds that we currently have, and the housing funds, the, the Housing Advisory Committee does?
The only, I, I think, I think if we were going to go down that road of changing the policy, um, my suggestion would be that, uh, those millions of dollars, however many millions it is, I don't know.
It's three million dollars or four million, whatever it is, that we set aside for economic development,
that a portion of that could be moved over to, if you wanna move it to housing, or if you wanna move it to, I don't know if it's sitting in the general fund or exactly where that money is sitting.
No, it's in a designated separate area that's only for economic development right now, but obviously the board can move it wherever they want.
I, I would suggest that that, that money would be a great use. Or, or, or this avenue would be a great use for a portion of that money, uh, to try and build the inventory of, of attainable housing.
Well, in my opinion, the greatest need in this county is for rental.
Well, yes.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
My question is, my question is, and, and I, and I don't have a problem going down that road, okay? But if we're gonna do, you know, something for affordable housing, um, obtain affordable housing, then are we, are we gonna allow that just for workers? Or, or, you know, cause what you're getting, and nothing against it, you're getting a lot of retirees that are going into these places.
It can't be a fifty-five or over, cannot be that.
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, just like the one in Inverness, uh, you know, that thing filled up before it was even, uh, finished. But most of you look at, I think there's a lot of retirees in that in there, and, and, but, you know, so are we gonna talk about workforce housing, or, you know?
Could we do this then? Seems like there's interest in pursuing this. Can, can we just say what I've heard said is, "Let's not reinvent the wheel." Let's look to see what, what has worked. It appears we have some funding. Yesterday, we talked about taking funding from drug seizure and putting it into mental health. Maybe we're talking about taking economic development and putting it into workforce housing. So does everybody agree we would like Randy to take a look at what's in there, what can be done, what can't be done, and, and so on, and, and, uh, so Denise, yes?
Thank you. From my conversations with you.
Yes.
Cause we talked about this extensively before today.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're, we're talking about two different things. The LAHTCs, which is what Commissioner Kennard is talking about, low-income housing tax credit projects, which is what we're looking at, Marina Del Rey and Beverly Hills, the new one, uh, you know, those are different. Those are housing projects from the federal, the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. That's, let's put that in a box, and I think you're interested in pursuing that, and for all the reasons stated. But I think what, what I got from our conversations more was you want lower-priced houses. Not apartment complexes for low-income people that have to meet those income qualifications. Well, it's not.
I, I know what you're saying, but.
But there are income restrictions, whether it be senior housing or non-senior housing, but low-income. I think there's a difference between the workforce housing.
No, there is, and I, I've actually written it down like that, and that's why I said I'm not a great communicator, but yes, I, I, whatever way we get there, there is a need for both, and I, and, and you did say that. But I'm, we are low in inventory for workforce housing.
Lower-priced houses.
Attainable housing, and, but I'm not, I actually think that we are going to max ourselves out if we continue to do even the Beverly Hills-style, single-family home. Like, we need to look at, like, townhomes or condos or something like that, where it can be attainable. And it doesn't matter if it's a nursing student or a.
Can I, can I just say something?
Single-family.
Yeah.
But they're single-family rather than apartments. Whether it's a, it's multi-family housing, whether it's duplexes, triplexes, condos, those types of things. They're different from the apartment complexes that are rent-restricted.
I think we need both, and that's what I was trying to get at.
And where is it government's duty to enter into the free marketplace to deter? Well, that, what I'm, what I'm asking is, we need some clarification, because how many times have we had developers come in and ask for changing in their PUDs and their zoning, because the market has changed? And so the private industry is modifying to the market of the needs of the community. I just always have a problem when government gets in there and starts saying, "Oh no, only these kinda priced homes can go there." I'll tell you, the area I represent, that every time they hear about low-income fifty-five or older, I, I, I get lit up, you know, "Is that coming to Sugar Mill? Is that going?" You know, because all they hear is Section Eight. That's what they hear, Section Eight housing, and it's not. But everything is, and, and all my question is, is yes, it'd be nice if there was a bigger stock of apartments and, and lower-priced housing out there, but when does it become go-, government's responsibility to dictate the marketplace?
And it doesn't, I'm just saying that there, we have, if we want to be appealing to all the people moving into the state of Florida, we ha-, we have areas that could be developed.
And we need to invest in there, is what you're saying?
With infrastructure and, and the more, I'm sorry, I'm terrified of this.
That's okay, that's good.
Let me help you?
I've been trying to answer for a while now.
Okay, hold on, wait just a second. Holly's been paid, let her go, then you're next, Scott.
I was trying to speak before Jeff, but thank God he interrupted me, cause you did a better job of explaining Colonnade than I did.
And I don't wanna rush you guys, but I do get, we're.
I, I have also had discussions with Denise about this as well, and I do think we need both buckets. And I'll tell you your answer, you said public safety is important. We need those people to be able to afford to live here and not live with their parents. So, do we spend a lot of money on that? No. Do we incentivize the builders to build that type of housing? Yes, through tax credits or whatever. Reason being is that the, um, the builders make a lot, they make a lot more money with a larger house. It's the, the footprint of the house is where they turn the most profit. So the smaller footprint homes do not make as much money, so they have to be incentivized to build those things. Um, I'm not talking about us getting into building it ourselves, but there needs to, we need to be creative on how we do that. Whether there's, um, I know, are, we have an impact fee for affordable housing that is lower, right? But there is no actually line item, for example, for affordable housing or tax credit, or something that the builders pay into somehow, some way, again, being creative to do that, so.
Here's what I'd like to, and you got it next, but just let me say this, okay? Hold, hold your thought. Here, here's what I'd like to get with this today. This is good stuff, because instead of sitting here and just talking and saying, "Oh well, we ran out of stuff to talk about," I wanna leave here today feeling like we just started something. So my, my goal today is, is, once we get down to prioritizing what we think we wanna do, I would like to have a schedule workshop, at least one a month, okay? As we move forward after today, to take one of our top priorities every month and have just a workshop for that. Cause we can, we can workshop this, that one issue, we could take infrastructure, we can workshop that. Because we're not gonna get down into the weeds. All I'm trying to determine today is do we have a majority of the commissioners saying, "Yeah, I'm willing to talk about that and see how far we can go." So, now you got.
Here's what I, so, so I'm a little bit, uh, confused here, because earlier we talked about, let's raise up the dead-on impact fees. Let's raise them up, okay? But now we're talking about ta-, ta-, tax credits to, to bring someone in. Guys, houses aren't cheap today. I don't, the inventory here, whether the inventory is somewhere, the inventory's terrible everywhere, okay? Go, you, you can go build a two-two, and it's gonna cost you, what it should cost you a hundred thousand is gonna cost you two hundred thousand a day because of inflation. Okay, my son, I, I keep telling him, "Just sit tight, it's gonna bust, and when it busts, then you'll, you'll find a deal, okay?" A house that sold, um, last year for five-fifty is now selling for three-quarters of a million dollars. Okay, it, it, Ron, you're right, it's not our responsibility to do that. Now, when it comes to, you know, uh, federal governments, in, in, in those programs, we've done our part. Uh, Jeff, we definitely could put skin in the game to get those complexes here, cause we've already designated land for that, okay? And we put them in areas that's walkable, uh, walking to the grocery store, walking to the, the convenience of the people there. But now we need to put skin in the game, uh, like you, like you said, and get those projects pu-, pushed up on the list. When it comes to, but here's what I think you're talking about, and tell me if I'm wrong. Let's just take an area of, of Citrus Springs that the roads aren't good. So if we went in there and we, uh, revamped the road system, then you're gonna get a developer saying, "Hey, I can build these homes and I can sell them," okay? Now, we can't dictate, uh, the type of home he's gonna build, cause he's gonna build a home where he thinks he can. Now, we can't dictate the type of home he's gonna build, cause he's gonna build a home where he thinks he can make the most value for his investment. But, but that's, I think, what you're talking about. There's areas in this county that haven't been, and, and again, I, I'll go back to the county years and years ago. We should've never accepted those roads, but we did. But that, that's what I think you're looking at is, there's areas that, that we could invest in, maybe repaving roads, that will bring a, a home builder, you know, a national home builder or someone like that that might build a more affordable home, you know, for, for lower, you know, you know, cause, cause I mean, even today, excuse me.
I'm gonna interject for what?
Yeah.
I broke down the goals that Commissioner Bob has as increase in inventory of attainable housing, and then separately invest in infrastructure to incentivize growth and economic development.
They, they are two, and they ended up being married together.
But they're two separate things.
Yeah, I, they, they, yeah. They are two, yeah, you're right.
Well, let's see. Ruthie, can you, can you agree then?
Would you agree with that? That's what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
So, let's, let's put it up there, and if the board wishes to, we'll workshop it, we'll get into all the details. We'll talk about, maybe we can do some, maybe we can do all, maybe we'll do none of it, but we'll go into more detail. Cause it seems like there's a lot of good ideas.
You know, we got an inventory problem cause Citrus County's been found.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody's moving.
Go ahead, you got it.
And then, so, you know, I had the road resurfacing and making us a little bit investing in desirable. And then the workforce housing, and, you know, I'll deal with that in a workshop. And then my, my third thing was, this has been brought up to me, and when people take things to the dump, they're dumping some things like good bikes that maybe the path or somebody else could use. But once it goes into the dump, you can't get it back out. So, what if there was some kind of signage at the dump that, for bicycles, that are at the front for a clean zone? And we make up an agreement with the path or some group, I, I've gone blank on the, all the names. And they're saying, okay, there's gonna be this area, and once a week or whatever, you're gonna pay the county.
Yeah, I don't wanna rain on your parade, but the problem is, we have the reverse problem. The county weighs tipping fees to the path and all these thrift stores for the stuff that people take to them that they take to the landfill and throw away. You know, so now you're saying that we expect them to go to the landfill and pick up the stuff that people. I'll tell you, this is how good the economy is. Have you tried to donate anything to a thrift store lately?
They won't.
You have to take a picture of it and send it to them, and then they'll tell you if they come and pick it up or not, you know? That's, that's where we're at right now, you know, so.
So, no one to clean them?
Well, I would just say, that's the kind of thing, you really think that rises to the level of a county commissioner, board decision? That, that we should be worried about picking up bicycles at the landfill? I mean, that's a big difference from all this other stuff we've been talking about, so.
I know, I thought it'd be an easy one.
I, I think, I, I would just say no, because like I said, every year, we waive the dumping fees for these folks. They load up. I know the, the one down in Grover, Cleveland, they have a whole truck, and I think once a week, they haul it to the landfill of the stuff that they didn't have a chance to say no to, that they, people just drop off and they load it up and take it to the landfill. So, great idea, but I think it's.
I think we give like the key, I think we give them like thirty-five hundred or thirty-five hundred dollars a free tip a year.
Well, I was talking about, like, I go to the dump and I have a perfectly good bike, instead of taking it into the dump.
Why didn't you take it to the drop? Why didn't you take it to the thrift store?
That's true too.
Yeah, take a picture and get them to.
Yeah, yeah. And they'll probably say, no, we don't want it.
I didn't think that far.
That's okay. I don't wanna rush you. What else you got?
And that's all I got.
Okay, did you have color?
Yeah, let me mention one thing. There's a bill in the legislature that I think everybody here needs to be cognizant of. I don't know how much traction it have or will get. But there's a proposal to index the homestead exemption. And if that passes, we're gonna get hammered on both ends, cause you got to save our homes, okay? And that's capped at three percent, okay? So, they're capped, so if it goes up five, you know, it, it creates an inequity there. But then if the annex, if they change the homestead exemption, bump it up three percent, bottom line is, is that it's going to make it so if you leave the millage the same, you're actually gonna lose money because of the high number of homestead properties.
And that'll probably gain traction.
Well, the legislature has a propensity for passing stuff that has no impact on their budget.
That's right.
Can you say that one more time for me?
Okay, what, there's a proposal in the legislature now, index the homestead exemption. Okay, so if it's twenty-five thousand now, and right now, there's a twenty-five and additional twenty-five from fifty to seventy-five thousand. If they index it three percent, those two numbers would go up fifteen hundred dollars in a given year, okay? That would be tax revenue that we lose. So, but Mr. Carnahan's right in that if it doesn't affect Tallahassee, they tend to lean towards it.
They love it.
But that would, that would have a, that, if that passes, that will have a major impact on the county now.
So, if that passes, are you saying no more rollbacks?
That's up to us to determine. What he's telling you is what.
Well, worse than that, worse than that is rollback is now gonna become, is gonna become the same amount of money you got last year.
Right.
I mean, I mean, keeping the current millage is gonna be like, not quite, you'll still come out a little bit ahead, but not much. But it, essentially, your current millage rate will become almost like the rollback rate was, that will generate the same amount.
Cause I like keeping the millage the same.
Let's, let's just, that's a good point, and let me just do this. Jeff, you're up next, when, when Ruthie's done.
I'm sitting here patient.
I know you are. Everybody has been. Like I said, I'd like us to leave here today thinking, oh, I had more to say, rather than like, oh, that really wasted my time. But here's something to think about too. We had a speaker get up yesterday and talk about, my housing went up, my electric went up, my food went up, my so-and-so. Does that not speak for every county employee? Does not every county employee's bills go up?
Nationwide.
Does, does that not speak to all the people at law enforcement, EMS, and the fire department? So, how can we turn around and tell the citizens, well, sorry, prices didn't go up? So, I think what I've said in the past two years, and other commissioners have too, is I've said, we start at rollback, okay? Then we look at cost of living. Then we look at what extra services the citizens want, and we go from there. Well, if the rollback number now is being artificially manipulated at the state, we have to look at what the real rollback number is, not what they manipulated it down to. So, what I always called rollback was revenue neutral. And then we start with revenue neutral, not losing ground. Then we add cost of living, then we add, you know, I ask people, are you, do you want more fire? Yes, are you willing to pay for it? Yes, okay, so there you go. We did that. We raised, we raised it for, for fire, we raised it for EMS, and nobody said a word. Everybody's very happy. So, let's not get locked into the terminologies. I just, I've always been against, everything's going up, so just let the rate keep going. Because that says that just because your house got more valuable, you pay more taxes without any additional services to go with it. But now we have to realize, and this will be the last of my editorializing, every person in the state of Flor, Florida that voted for the fifteen-dollar minimum wage should never, ever come in and complain about their taxes. That, that's my, that's my message to the folks out there. If you didn't vote for it, you have every right to complain. But if you voted for the fifteen-dollar minimum wage, don't you dare go in and complain about your taxes being too high? Because where do you think that money is gonna come from, okay? So, anyway, with that said, Jeff, it's up to you. I want, let me sure. Ruthie, you got your big three up there?
I, big two.
Big two, okay.
Third is what.
Big two. Well, I'm, I'll, I'll address one that we've already touched on, economic development. We have gone through, since we created the position, we've gone through two economic development directors, and I'll say less-than-exciting results, which is, which is disappointing. I don't know, I don't know what the problem is. I think it needs to be identified as to what's going on. Are, are they, you know, are they being, are they being held back here in La Canto? Should the, should they be answering directly to the county commission rather than the county administrator? Is it lack of workforce housing? Is it lack of workforce? I don't, I don't know what the problem is.
It's definitely not a lack of money now.
But, but it's, it's, you know, we don't have, we don't have anything exciting to hang our hat on. And I, I don't know if those two individuals, I, I don't think that they, I don't think that they left because of something wrong going on here, but we don't really know. And here, here we stand still with less-than-stellar results when it comes to economic development. We're getting, you know, we're getting some of the fast-food stuff. That's not economic development. I mean, they're new, it's new buildings, it's new construction, but that's not economic development. We're getting a couple other things here and there. There's rumor of a couple big things going on or in the works. That's not economic development, I don't believe. Career-class jobs is still what we're lacking. And until there's a very real focus on why are we not getting there, what's the problem? You know, is it that the county commission isn't, isn't, you know, are, are we not laying the groundwork for private industry to come in and invest? I don't know. I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think that it's, that it's our job to, to incentivize and say, you know, here's how much money we'll give you if you come do business in our county. But why aren't they looking here? Has it been transportation? Has it been workforce? We don't know. You know, Pasco County got it wrong for a lot of years. West Pasco County was, was and still is a very rough place to look at as far as planning-wise, development goes, that type of thing. Classic picture of urban sprawl. East Pasco County's a different story. They've figured something out. Now, maybe it was the Suncoast Parkway, maybe it was the new economic development director. I don't know what did it. But they've got stuff happening there.
Big stuff too.
And with the transportation changes coming to our county, I would like to know that we're doing the right thing. So, do I think it's the government's responsibility to get involved in these types of things? Maybe not necessarily, but we need, we need greater economic development here for those career-class jobs, I feel.
Can I comment just where you started, right there? Stanford Bay Regional Planning Council did a study because they are our economic development umbrella group. The number-one thing that drives around those areas is access to a major university.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, we don't have that, okay? But what we will have is closer access to a major university because of the Parkway. And as soon as you started talking about that, I always go back to, why are we all here? We are economic development. You're a business person, you're a business, we're all business people, right? What brought us here? Quality of life. Brings me back to Holly's thing about communicating. What do we have, okay? So, we set up economic development, and they did their own marketing thing, okay? If you look at what Citrus Hills does, they take an ad out on the back of the tourist guide. Why would a housing development or community advertise in a tourist guide? Because they know when those tourists are here, they're gonna wanna come back and live here, right? That's economic development. The first thing that hit me is this is where we get rid of those silos. And those, the, what Holly has been talking about, what you're talking about, if we advertise our quality of life and push the environment, we push good transportation, good schools, and safety, those are the kind of things that attract employers. That's why we're here, right? So, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, we need to get out and get our message out. What do we have? We all know we have it. For years, I've been pounding on getting into Florida Trend. We, we, if, if business people read Florida Trend, inside and outside of Florida, if people started seeing something saying, hey, there's stuff happening up there in Citrus County, we better go and find out what it is. The people that are retiring are finding us. Now, we want to get the, the business community here. And so, I, I agree with you, but I still keep thinking, we come back and we've always hit economic development as a silo. That means finding a, a factory, a computer company, or whatever to move here. And, and I'm just always said, if you can get an architectural firm to move here that does all their, through stuff online. We need broad-based internet to do that, right? I mean, so, those are the kind of things that I think that we can start marketing what we have that makes it attractive to other people that, that brought us here. And so, I, I don't think it's one thing to say, we don't do that well, we don't do that well. But, you know, I, I was having a discussion with somebody the other day, and I said, our low tax base is what attracts businesses. Because if you look at taxes and they go like this in counties, people don't like that. They don't wanna hear the county commission's broke, and then they raise taxes. They like to see stability. They like to see what their bond ratings are, you know? That goes to economic development, but we have to get it out to people so that they know about it. And I would think before we spend money for a separate marketing campaign through just economic development, we put the money behind what Holly's trying to do to get that broader message out, saying, did you know this about Citrus County or whatever? So, that's just my two cents on it.
Why, why isn't, why, why hasn't our past two directors of economic development done that? You know, we, we, Bruce brought forward some things that, you know, we passed some, we muddled through others, we argued about others. I mean, is it, is it the county commission's fault that they?
I'm gonna speak real candidly about this, and I'm not speaking bad about anybody. But one of those marketing campaigns were brought to us, we approved it, my company used that company before, and we fired them, okay? So, I'm sitting there being asked to vote on a company at a public meeting that I know can't do the job we're hiring them to do. But what am I supposed to do? Be anti-economic development because I, our economic development director brought it forward? So, that's why I talk about measurable results, you know? When it's thrown on us at a meeting, either if you vote for it, you're pro, and if you vote against it, you're anti. And all, I knew then it wasn't gonna work. Didn't work for me. So, so instead of anybody ever saying, hey, has anybody else ever used this company? Have we ever tried this or whatever? And, and I really felt bad about that, cause I didn't wanna throw anybody under the bus. I figured it's better just to sit back. Maybe the results will be different this time. Maybe we'll try. But, but your questions are, are good to ask because.
Yeah, let me ask you.
Randy's got something. What, two points. First thing, the, the biggest impediment here has been, and it's getting ready to change, and I think you're gonna see an avalanche, okay? Transportation grid's been a major problem, okay? With the Suncoast opening up, things are gonna change, and you're gonna see some pretty big stuff, and I can't go into it, popping in the next six to twelve months, assuming the economy stays decent, okay? That's one. The second, the second biggest issue, and this is a much harder one to solve, is qualified workforce. That's a problem nationally, but it's even a bigger problem locally. Because one of the things here, and other that have older citizens sometimes, is they want something to do. Here, our citizens are older, and they're of an age that they don't really want something else to do. Because you can capitalize on that, that workforce that's been out in business and industry. I mean, in a city I was in in Arizona, we had, you know, we had, one of the volunteers was a prior CEO of Catdaw. Okay, I mean, you can't buy that kind of talent, okay? But they played golf for three years, they retired playing golf. They wanted something else to do. The other one did all the production stuff for Eli Lilly. But that, that's the second one, that's the hardest one to get to, i- is gonna be workforce. Now, with the Suncoast, I think you're gonna be willing to see some people commute from the outskirts of Tampa to Citrus County, cause they're gonna be going against traffic. They're not gonna be funneling into Tampa without heavy traffic. So, I think there's some stuff. There's some other things that I can't talk about, but there's one project that I know will. We've been expecting them to make an announcement any day now.
Let me, let me tweak this a little bit. Jeff's got the floor, so you decide who you wanna let, ask you a question. I think Ruthie wants to.
When you started speaking, and I instantly pulled up from the back of my brain where I read an article that if you want a strong community, you need a strong university system. Well, we're not gonna have a strong university system like UF or South Florida, but we do have a university, and perhaps that's where I go and we do the workshop, and I'll do some more homework and figure out, maybe that's where we put the dorm-style apartment and nurture the nursing program, which we know that is part of our industry. And just take a little circle instead of having a big circle. So, when you started talking, I was like right on, and you confirmed it by saying, what makes successful is a strong university system. I'm gonna tell you, if I had a child, if one of my daughters was a struggling student or didn't know what she wanted to do and, and, you know, gearing her, I would pay for that. I would pay for that child to live in Citrus County in a dorm apartment to go to CF because, one, they can get a degree for very, very little money, and it's a safe community. And we don't have that for, we can't even advertise that. And that might be our start. So, I just wanna say, right on, you're, you're at something. You're touching something that we could do. And I would also like to know why this hasn't, why the two economic development guys haven't been pushing advertising, hey, we got a really safe community, or a picture of a pasture where you can work from home, and, yeah, they're not gonna see the beach, but they can look at a couple cows. Why, why, why hasn't that been hit upon?
Can I?
Thank you, just maybe.
Are you, you just keep interrupting.
No, no, sorry. Here, here, Jeff, here's what I'm, here, here's, here, I'm gonna just hit the nail on the head. Um, I don't think they were ta- that, they weren't talented enough as an economic developer, or, or, uh, okay, we need to bring somebody in that has the talent, that has the connections to get to these companies, okay? Now, we have the road system here, okay? But as far as I'm concerned, uh, yeah, they were economic developer directors. But if you really want to, uh, get in the economic game, me and Randy had this talk yesterday. We need to hire someone that's a real game changer. Um, and that's totally my opinion. Um, I don't think they're being held back, but if you wanna get in the economic development game, and I think we should, okay? We got an industrial park over in Inverness, uh, with a 5,000-foot runway that could be expanded out to whatever, uh, with the property behind it. Um, uh, you got the, it holder, okay? Uh, you got the, uh, the, the, um, turnpike looking to come, come, come close to us somewhere, okay? So, so the, uh, road systems are opening up. And I, and I think when it comes to workforce, I think it's a regional. I mean, how many people, Ron, you brought something to the table a while back that 70% drive out of the county to work, in Hernando County and Pasco County, and, but, to me, we need to hire someone that's talented and pay them for what they're worth.
And I think that they should answer to the commission. You touched upon that, and I think they should.
Answer to, I'll come right there. Um, so, I guess, I, I would challenge, before we get to that point, 'cause that's gonna be a divisive point. Um, Randy, what I would like to see then is, why don't you bring back to us, whether it's, I guess, you know, as a group or have those discussions individually, um, what you think it's gonna take to bring in that person that's, that's got that level of skill? Uh, you know, privately, if we talk and I say, well, Randy, you know, we're, we're budgeting $100,000 for it, and you go, it's gonna cost you a quarter million a year to get the caliber person you want in here. Though, that's the kind of information that we need to know and then decide if we wanna get into economic development that badly. Uh, but I, we need, we need to know the truth about what it's gonna take to get that person here. We've, uh, we, we've struggled for a long time, and we've heard, uh, we've heard all of the reasons why we've struggled, uh, in economic development. Um, I think, anyway, now, now's the time for us to, to push that. Yes, sir?
I tried to sell you on this two years ago. You wouldn't listen. I tried to say a year ago you wouldn't listen. Maybe this year you'll listen. What do we have? What is the most usually successful board in Citrus County that is showing dramatic returns for our county?
TDC.
The TDC.
Yeah.
I asked that the board structure the economic development program just like the TDC. So, I'm gonna run that by you again. What we should do is you should create an ec- economic development council. It should be chaired by a county commissioner, you. That's just, I'm just, I'm just, well, I'm just throwing it out there, okay? Then, what we do is we take applications for that board. We have the attorney look into it. We draft bylaws just like the TDC that says you have to be the collector of the tax. So, we want business people on there, and we want people that have skin in the game, bankers and, you know, whatever. But, but again, this is a workshop item, again. But we create a board just like the TDC. You said, do they answer to the county commission? Yeah, we have a commissioner that chairs that board. Who does director and the staff report to? They report to the administrator, but they have a monthly meeting where the, the whole board gets input and guidance and direction. That's how you get to monitor. You don't wait till once a year for your economic development director to come to the VOCC. You, you hear monthly, you know, monthly, we're gonna hear, economic development board, what's happening over there? What's going on? And then, the budget is formulated. The TDC budget grows every year because it's exceptionally successful.
Yeah.
Right? So, the same thing can happen here. If, if we are successful and bring in those businesses, the budget will grow. So, I just plead with you. We've tried all the others.
Why have you been sandbagging that? I would've been all over that.
You know, we gotta start there with, we gotta start with a quarter to.
I, I, I keep bringing it up, and what I was told.
I have not heard that. This is excellent.
That's one of the first things I said when I was elected, but, to staff. I said, why do we not have a board just like TDC?
There you go.
All right, so, in the interest, in the interest of time and lunch.
Uh-huh.
Let's, can we all agree to workshop that?
I want that number one priority.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd definitely workshop it. What I don't wa- I, I like your idea, but I don't want, what is what we see in the past.
Oh, no, 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 no. Well, it's all, it's all gonna.
Great people, but this, you know, I mean, you know.
But, um, it needs to be, uh, li- like the TDC.
Truly vetted.
Start from new foundation.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna start, just build it just like the TDC.
And we've got to have somebody. Listen, I think the other two were economic development guys, don't get me wrong, but I wanna see their success story before they come here. Um, because I do think that we, uh, are, are on the verge of something big, uh, especially with the road system now. Um, and I think we gotta bring someone talented, and you're gonna have to pay them.
You, you've come up four ideas, and they've all made it to the top of the list. I don't wanna cut you off, but here's our choices. Um, uh, lunch is ready to be served. I just wanna remind everybody, lunch is for the people around this table and senior staff, and Veronica determines who that is, okay? And, uh, and then we'll come back to the table. So, Jeff, you make the call. Do you, we wanna chit chat and just small talk during lunch? Or do you wanna continue on with your agenda item and have everybody's undivided attention? 'Cause either way, after lunch, we come back to you.
Let's have a work, let's have a working lunch. Grab, grab your food. Let's keep talking and moving through it.
Okay, so Veronica, are you ready for us to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, ready for us to go?
Yeah.
Oh, you're gonna bring, oh, look at it, you don't even have to get up, so, okay, all right, so. Okay, Jeff, so you still have the floor. Keep it going, man, you're batting a thousand.
Right on. Well, this'll be an easy one because it, I, I think, yet again, it's, it's.
Hold on. Are you senior staff?
I got served for you.
Around the table, it's senior staff. Veronica will tell you.
The, uh, the Crystal River runway, uh, that, that extension, I think, is, is, uh, uh, I, I think, I hope that's in the works. Uh, when Senator Simpson spoke to the chamber luncheon, he said that it was already, they were already working on it. So, hopefully, that, that means that we're gonna see some, some movement there. And I hope that, um, uh, we're ready to do what needs to be done as far as, once we get that money, you know, land acquisition or whatever we need to do, that that runway gets, gets extended sooner rather than later.
Veronica, did you get that, the runway extension?
That was on mine, too.
We're waiting. Okay, obviously, the funding is, is one aspect.
Ron, that was on mine, too. She may have already said.
Okay, the other one's going to be, uh, the property acquisition, 'cause we had an arrangement reached with a property owner, and I don't know if it's even the same one now. They were gonna sell us a piece that we needed for that, and then the realtor convinced them they just wanted to sell the whole thing, they wouldn't sell pieces. So, it will be a condemnation in all property owners.
Okay. Well, that's, uh, that would be unfortunate, but hopefully, hopefully, we can work together and, and buy what we need. Uh, the, um, let's see, what else do I have there?
Is that, are you still on runway? Cause I, I have something to add.
Thanks for Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
I hope we bought her a sandwich.
I hope so, too, yes, okay.
So, that, uh, Crystal River runway was there. You know, Randy, you talked about, or you mentioned the, the horsepower that, that was retired in the community where you were at at one point. We've got tremendous horsepower as well that's retired in our own community, and we need to find a way to get them engaged in what's going on. I, I've, I've mentioned it before, um, but we've got an individual that lives in our community that owns a company that is, uh, testing, uh, autonomous vehicles out in the southwest. I forget if it's Nevada, Arizona, but they fly back and forth out there. They're, they're living here because of whatever reasons, but they own this company with all of these vehicles that are being tested out there. Um, that's somebody that we should be talking to.
Could I get an introduction?
We need to, we need to identify.
No, we'll, we'll tell me later.
But, that's, that's only one. You know, we've got another compa- another, uh, couple that lives in the community that owns different healthcare facilities all over the southeast United States. You know, these, these are folks that, that travel by private jet to go and visit their companies. They live here. We've got people that live out in Black Diamond that, you know, to have, have their, their planes hangered up in Ocala because we don't have the hangaring facilities here for the, for that big of a plane.
Yeah.
Those are people that we should be talking to. Uh, you know, we, we've gotta get these people engaged. They don't wanna be involved in the day-to-day business of government, but an economic development director going out to sit down and have lunch with them and saying, here's the direction we wanna go, here's the people we need to get in front of, how do we do that? Uh, you know, those are, those are people that, that aren't gonna come to us and say, how can I help you? Because they're either running their business, or they're golfing, or they're vacationing, or whatever they might be doing. Uh, but those are people we need to be talking to. Those are folks who have done these things before.
Um, I'm really glad you brought up corporate jets and facilities in the county. Um, while we're at it with the 5,000-foot extension, it would be really nice to be able to buy that bright-colored house and the Dairy Queen on the north end of the dirt runway because everything is encroaching on the airport, and that does not allow for good future planning for corporate jets to go in and out of there. So, if, if and when either of those come up for sale, we need to, 'cause I know Dairy Queen would like to get out of there.
We've got Inverness waiting for us.
There you go. There you go.
I'm telling you, I live in this world. We have two wonderful airports, and they're on opposite sides of the county. Nobody is gonna wanna drive to one to the other.
They're driving to Ocala.
No, they're actually taking off with less fuel and then stopping in Ocala.
No, my neighbor said hangar in Ocala.
You know, Ty, Ty, um, Hill, the place for Kansas City Chief, just bought a place in, um.
Yep.
Citrus Hills.
Yeah.
That's his guy.
He comes in all the time.
Yeah.
No problem coming into, uh, Inverness with a full load of fuel going out.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
The, uh, let's see, another item that I had was planning for growth. I think we've worked that one enough. You know, I, uh, you know, I mentioned Croft, I mentioned Venable. Um, there are other roads, Cardinal. These are roads that we know are gonna have to be widened. With, they don't have to be widened tomorrow, but we know they're gonna have to be. I would like to see, what is that plan? Um, let's, let's, you know, take a page out of DOT's workbook and plan this out. You know, we're gonna spend X amount on, on the design for widening Croft. We're gonna, you know, over the next three to four years. You know, look how long they've taken with 41 North. Lord knows, that's been going on forever. But now, you know, you can see what the plan is. Uh, from this year to this year, we're gonna spend X amount, you know, we're gonna fund design. Then, we're gonna fund right-away acquisition in, in the following years. And then, uh, you know, so many years out beyond that, we're gonna fund construction. That's the kinda plan that we should have for these roads that we know have to be widened. Last, but not, certainly not least, um, I've mentioned it before in our, in our county me- in our county commission meetings. I've had no less than three different directors tell me that they are struggling for staff, that they need, and it's not a lot of staff members, but it's, you know, uh, that they are, they are understaffed and, um, the folks that they've got working are putting in all the hours they can and, uh, are getting burned out. I'm not in favor of growing government, but our county's growing, and these department heads are, are, are telling, are, are telling me privately, we're understaffed. We can't, we can't continue at the pace that we are right now, give the customer service that you guys want us to offer with the existing staff that we have. And I don't wanna, I'm not going to name them publicly. I think that's, I think that's on our.
We only have so many department heads.
I think, I think our county administrator needs to sit down with those folks and revisit that and, and come back to us with, this is, this is where we're at. If you want, you want this, this is the funding that's gonna be required, then.
Can I come in on that?
Well.
During the budget cycle, there's usually a column that says personnel requested and personnel being presented to us. Do you still do that? So, if somebody wants 10.
Whenever you're.
If, if somebody wants 10, and you think they only need five, we get both those numbers, right? So, I would say, when we get the budget this year, we look at that. And if you see a department that's asking for more than what Randy's giving them, that's the time to say, why do you feel they don't need these people in there, so?
Well, there, there are a lot of good ideas coming out, but we, we come back to the same root thing as we do with growth. I mean, there's, there's a balance between what services people want and what services people will pay for, okay? And frequently, they don't match. Uh, because, you know, I may wanna own a Maserati or something, okay? But I can't afford a Maserati.
Okay, my.
So, it, it, you know, it's a balance act of mind.
It's not, it's not all that. Because we have definitely two departments.
That are enterprise.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of money in those enterprise funds.
That's not, that was my comment right there. So, if it's an enterprise fund and they need employees, the enterprise fund's paying for them, so what, I mean, can we go ahead and, if, if that's, if that's the areas? Um, what, what's, what's the suggestions there?
We've had it been building, and we've had it utility.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, again, I'm just saying, if.
Well, they only got so many enterprise funds.
No, no, I understand that. No, no, that, but, but what I'm saying, if it is an enterprise fund, and there is money in there, and then they, and then they need.
I mean, the other enterprise fund.
That's not, that's not gonna, that's not gonna affect the, uh, budget.
I'm not, I'm not gonna get into who it was.
That's right.
There were three different ones.
Oh, enterprise fund's not general?
No, uh, they're, what I, what I'm saying, you've got, you need to sit down, you've got folks that are, that are begging for help, and they're not getting it. You've got staff that is, that is, um, burning out, that you're, you're squeezing all that you can out of them because of the growth of the county, which is a good thing, but you've got to, you've got to build the staff when you've got trusted directors, which I believe that you have, that are telling you, I need one, I need two, or I need three, you know? Um, that needs, that needs to be brought forward.
Well, utilities, utilities is, is a very steady stream because you're gonna continue to have the same amount of customers. Some of the areas, building, for example, is like the checkout counter at Publix, okay? Sometimes in the day, you have more or less, and when the building is going strong, it's good. But the difficulty in government is when, if you go through another cycle like we did in 2008, one of the issues that was identified was they didn't release staff, which is a tough thing to do. So, what you try to do is you try to make it so you staff them to where they need it, and it may be a little challenging, there's no question about that. But you can't staff up to, to the maximum all the time, 'cause you can't afford it unless you're willing to dismiss them if, if the thing goes down. So, it's, it's a balance of that.
No, no, no question, but we're not balancing very well right now.
Well, according to the people that you won't disclose, so, here's the issue that I keep saying. Anybody that's in the audience listening, if you have personnel needs, you need to tell the administrator that, and he will put it in the budget. If Department X says they need, they have five, and they, they want 15, then Randy, you should put it in. They're asking for 15.
We do.
Okay, I know. That's what I'm saying. That's when that discussion happens, and then it's up to us. I looked at that last year. I, I saw position changes, and nobody asked any question. I, I saw position changes and nobody asked any questions about it, so I went to some folks and asked about it and I got my answers. But it, it still comes down to, it's up to us. Randy, Department X asked for fifteen people and you're saying, no, they need six. Why? What's the difference? What, what do they think they need that you don't think they do? That's when we have that discussion. I'll tell you, I understand what you're saying, but the problem I have with that is that's like the players going to the owner of the team and not going through the coach.
No, I've gone, I've gone and asked.
Well, but still, that, I'm, I'm just gonna disagree and say that's not our job.
They work for him.
They work for him. And if, and Randy, if Randy doesn't tell us what they ask for, then that's on him. Okay? But I trust Randy to say, hey, this department says they need twenty-five people and I think they only need five, then that's when we have that debate. That, that's my thinking.
It's in the budget book.
Can I say something? I, I am just gonna go from my own personal experience, but I'm a commissioner and I've gone to you and I've said things and you've told me no. Imagine a director going to you, do you, are you telling them no? And then we're not knowing that they want more people, because I haven't talked to anybody, so I don't know what you're saying. But I know my experience is no, and I'm a commissioner. So with that has to, is that the case? Are they coming to you and you just say no?
No, we have a budget process that they go through. The first round of the budget process is with the OMB staff.
Okay.
Okay, and they, you know, analyze needs based on work volumes and things like that. And then if there are differences after that, then they ultimately come to me.
And can I also back them and say, if you go to Randy and he tells you no, then you come to the board and say, I wanna do this, Randy told me no, what do you think?
Okay.
Okay? So Randy's gonna tell you what is under his jurisdiction and what he thinks he wants to do. But again, we come back to the thing, he's following the board direction. So if you go to him and say, I would like X, and he goes, no, I think you should come back to the board and say, I wanted X, I went to Randy, he said, no, what do you think? And then the board can say, we think you should have it or we agree with Randy? Okay? The only time I think Randy is the final word is when it comes to his staff, you know, and, and they answer to him. That's why I, I just have a problem with that. Because that's like, you know, like I said, one of the players on the team goes to the owner and say, I need more money and, um, or I want more playtime or whatever, and then the owner goes to the coach and says, give player X more playtime. That's not the way it works, you know? And we have to be real careful about that.
That's why I started this year and during my time, bringing up things I wanted to talk about. So I spent this year trying to find my way.
Randy's told me no a lot and I'm going to the board and said, Randy said no, what do you think? And sometimes the board says, we agree with Randy, and sometimes they say, no, we don't, you know, so.
Thank you.
Keep going, Jeff.
I'm done.
All right. Veronica, have you eaten?
Wait, no, I'm not.
Okay. Take your time, baby.
My last page.
Yeah.
Our multi-purpose path.
All right.
Four dollar trail. I think it needs to, needs to stay there. We need to continue funding it. You know, we've put a million dollars towards it now. I think we, we continue building down the road. It's on our legislative request. The studies are there that show that there's an economic return. Not for a year, not for five years. It's day in and day out, year after year after year, there's a return there.
Could we see the studies?
Yes. Yeah, it's, 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 you know, there's a reason that the state is putting millions of dollars into these trails all over the, all over the state. It's not because they've got access. These are Republicans up in Tallahassee, they're doing that. They tend to watch the, you know, the bottom line, and the bottom line is there's a return. I wanna see it stay, um, at or near the top of our legislative priorities. I wanna see us, Secretary Tebow told me last year when we were in Tallahassee that it's impressive and important when they see the local governing bodies putting, again, back to skin in the game. It's, it's an expensive trail. We don't have to, we don't have to eat the whole thing at one time, uh, but little bits at a time and continuing to beat that drum in Tallahassee will get it done.
Hopefully the Sun Trail list will open up, but the first thing they're gonna require on the Sun Trail is a PDNA.
And if we can get the money from Tallahassee, let's get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I'm done.
Veronica, how do you wanna do this? Do you need time to, um? You, 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 you eat your lunch, because I got some things we can talk about while you're eating your lunch. And when you're done, we're gonna, we're gonna bring this in for a landing. Jeff, that's it? All right. I really enjoy these kind of days because I consider us, we're, we're neighbors, we, uh, some of us have known each other for a long time. Some of us, we can disagree vehemently and then turn around and go out and have a beer or whatever. And that's what it's all about. We all work for the same people. We're all on the same team. Yesterday I went home and everybody says, you must be so disappointed, that meeting was so terrible. I go, no, we went on to the next item. We took a break, we came back and we went on. And that's what we're doing today. Nobody came in here today all upset because of yesterday and that's what we have to do. We have to keep moving forward, knowing you win a few and you lose a few. I remember my, our friend Gene McGee, who once told me, he was out talking to people about me years ago and, and trying to see if they support him. And, uh, somebody says, no, I don't like him. And the answer was, well, why? Well, this one time he voted against this. And he said, only once? How many times did he vote in favor of things you liked? You know, well, well, I said, so that's what you gotta think about, you gotta think about the big picture. And we're all the same way, you know, we, we all sometimes are this way or that way and whatever. So with all that in mind, well, we're giving Veronica a chance to have a lunch and, and we're doing really good, I think. I'll throw a few questions out at you. And whoever wants to start can start. And, uh, this is not official, so the clerk doesn't even need to worry about taking all this down. But we'll go around, I just have a few things I think might be interesting and you can go into as much detail or as little as you want. But whoever wants to start, what's the best piece of advice you've ever been given?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, and then Doug. Okay, okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, you're a commissioner, I'll just have you do it.
My sister-in-law, my sister-in-law retired from Sarasota County thirty-five years. And when I was campaigning, she said, if you win, I suggest that you go and meet with every department and learn about them and talk to them and get to know them. And I did that, I went to Randy, did that. Took me two months. I had that luxury, August, both of us did. Best advice I ever got. I realized they, we have some of the most talented staff. I used to call them bureaucrats. Now I call them some of my friends that I could go and say, can you explain this to me? They're always patient with me and they answer my questions and, and it's, um, and I do always go through Randy. Follow the rules. But that's the advice I ever got. Really helped me. I don't even know what I would've done without their knowledge.
Doug, best advice you ever got? Since you threw your hand up there like.
The best advice I've ever gotten is first of all, is to be a good listener. Because knowing the job position I am, I've got five different dynamic personalities. So to, to understand the, the, the way we interact, I have to be a good listener. And I have to be a person where I can be a little bit more proactive and, and try to, uh, be a little bit reactive to what I'm listening to. The two ladies, this has been a while since I've had ladies in. Nothing against ladies, but they talk differently. They speak differently. Their participation and their guy are different. You three guys, y'all a piece of cake.
Did you just call us a pain in the butt?
No. I was saying, what I'm saying, ladies are difficult. The last lady I had to deal with was Rebecca Bayes. She was the last commissioner lady I had to deal with. And then next day, it's been five guys for the longest time.
Then he has Scott Adams.
It's been a while. So what I'm saying is that in my position, I have to be, first of all, a good listener and second of all, to stay in my lane. And staying in my lane is sometimes difficult because everybody has different thought processes. I can handle the, the bulk of the commissioners. But with the two ladies, I need a clone. Truly.
Most definitely.
I need a clone. And, and the best advice I've ever had is to be a good listener to the desires of people. Because if you don't listen, you don't understand. And if, if they raise their voices up, that means something is going wrong and I have not listened. Attentive enough to that. That's the best advice.
I'm put out there, I've never yelled at you.
All right, Ruthie, you already had your.
Did Sarah give you that advice?
No, to be honest with you, my mom gave me that.
Who else wants to tell us the best advice they ever got? Anybody?
Is this for, um, our commission work or overall?
I'll, I'll give you an example.
No, I got one teed up, it's just not.
When, when I read this, the first thing that popped in my head is my dad, all the time I was growing up, I started working at a young age followed him around and he gave lots of advice. But the thing that's always stuck with me was the excuse only satisfies the giver. So that anytime you fail to do what you said you're gonna do, well, I'm late for a meeting, well, that's because I had a flat tire. Well, good, that satisfies you, it doesn't satisfy the people you had a meeting with. And that's stuck with me all these years. And you think about it, every time somebody gives you an excuse, does it satisfy you or is it just make you, is it satisfying the person that's giving it? So I've made it a point, I mean, we all do things and we have excuses, but I try to keep that in mind. Like if I tell Jeff I'm gonna be somewhere and I don't get there, I'm thinking, is Jeff gonna buy this excuse? You know, or is it just me giving an excuse? Everybody has excuses. It comes down to, I compartmentalize that to me, what do you prioritize? What, what's your priority? And to me, it's people's time. So if I make an appointment, unless there's a medical emergency or something that's outside my control, I don't say, well, I'm sorry, I got tied up. You know, I, I, and that's really stuck with me all these years. So that, that was mine. Yes.
Excellent advice you could give. Uh, my advice also comes from my dad. He, um, he loved his job in the Navy, absolutely loved it. And there was a big drawdown after the Vietnam War and he always made his decisions based on his love for flying, his career decisions. So the Navy and their infinite wisdom, after he got passed over to Admiral, there's a bottleneck right before Admiral. And he got passed over three times and Navy rules are, you, you're done. So he was basically told he had to retire by June thirtieth, nineteen seventy-eight. By God, the ceremony was June thirtieth, nineteen seventy-eight. We got in a car, we drove to Florida July first, and on July second, he opened his flight school and left mom to do all the unpacking, as usual. That didn't go over too well with mom, they don't need retirement, but anyway. He then is in a community where he's run, he's built a flight school and then running the airport and there's all these retirees that move next to the airport and then proceeded to complain endlessly. And he got very involved with county commission and there's just all these, just lots of angry retirees. And he said, baby, all I can think it about is that they didn't have careers that they loved. They went to a job in a factory or whatever up north and hated their job. And your job is so much part of your life that it turns you. And you don't know how to recover. He said, they didn't know how to enjoy life in retirement because they hated their jobs so badly that they just became bitter complainers. So he said, find a career that you truly love and the old sorrow that you'll never work a day in your life does not explain why I'm a commissioner, but it does explain the thirty-two-year career. So I made my career exactly in the industries I want to. I was told I couldn't do it and I did it. I work in aviation and horses.
Yes, sir.
Bernard Baruch, indecision is the decision things will remain the same.
Say that again?
Uh, indecision is the decision things will remain the same.
Yep.
Great, great. Denise, you've been quiet, any good advice you can share with us? Nope?
No.
Jeff, any advice? Would you ever?
Well, um, learned this back in graduate school before entering into my career was, uh, the advice that we heard many, many times, uh, was to listen. Listen to hear and understand, not listen to respond. And so when we would go in to see, at the time, students and hearing students present a case, listen to what they're telling you to pick up on little subtleties and what's going on would help you to better arrive at a diagnosis before somebody just walks in holding their back and you go, oh, they got a little back pain. I don't know, maybe there's something more going on there. So listen just to hear what they're saying. Then if you have a response afterwards, that's fine, but use your ears first.
Well, Scott, after seven years, I've heard lots of advice you've been given. You wanna, what, what's the best piece of advice?
Best advice was, you know, my dad was the only plant manager without a college degree at Fort Worth. Okay, and he always, uh, you know, you don't, excuse me, you don't kiss any ass, you get, you know, you, you work hard and, and you keep your head down and things will happen. And, uh, the night I got elected, my brother pulled me aside and said, you remember how you were raised? Don't go to the dark side. All right? There's a lot of dark side here. And, and again, not, not bad, but people are gonna pull you in all kinds of directions as a commissioner because they want something. You know, you gotta make the decision based on what you believe is right for the citizens. And, uh, so, uh, you know, God bless my father and, but, uh, so, so my brother reminded me of how we were raised and, and how to get, uh, be success, you know.
Great. So everybody talked about it too quickly. First one's very easy, just real quick, round, round the table for those of us who participate. Early bird or night owl?
Night owl.
Early bird.
Every all. I was gonna say both. I was gonna say both.
Definitely early.
Early?
Early.
I am gonna go with the twenty-four, seven thing. I go back and forth. Some nights I can stay out a little, but I would say attend more to early bird.
Not me. If you wanna get me, call me at five in the morning, but don't call after eight-thirty because I'm sound asleep, so.
I'm the only night owl. Odd person here.
Ron, I've always been, I've always, and my kids will tell you this, I've always had the same, the early bird is warm. Okay, so.
I didn't ask Randy, because anybody that's ever texted Randy at two in the morning knows you get a response at two-thirty.
Yeah.
Given, if you're not at work, are you an early bird or?
He doesn't ever sleep.
Early.
Early, okay.
Do you ever sleep? I don't sleep.
My, my best hours are.
Randy knows I'm, Randy knows I'm early too because my phone be ringing at six or six-thirty and I'm sure others is the same way, you know?
I am an absolute night owl, but I just get into an incredibly early. Where I came from, because he's a night owl also, so early is training needs to be in our work. We're gonna rewrite these goals and we can take, um, your.
You, you just take your time, I got one more thing and then we'll, we'll go into that. Because I, I think we've been extremely successful today, we'll, we'll see in a minute here. I'm sorry, Denise, you had something to add?
No, no.
No, well, you might be able to jump on this next one. We, we'll start with you. How do you recharge your batteries? In other words, you've had a stressful day, um, or, you know, you're trying to just, you know, get a second wind on what's going on. What do you do to recharge your batteries? And I know that's a tough question, so I'll, I will go first. Uh, I learned this a long time ago, everybody thought.
You said you were gonna start with me and now you're taking it away.
Well, you had that look on your.
You're such the chair.
Well, you look at, had that look, I'm reading your non-proker face when you look at me and go. That's like, ooh, I better jump away from Denise, she doesn't wanna answer that. Okay, Denise, what, how do you recharge?
Uh, exercise, whatever it is. Biking, running, working.
What you didn't used to, you didn't used to be a big biker.
No, but since I've been here, pretty much.
Okay, okay. Jeff?
Boating.
Boating, all right.
Reading.
Reading?
Yeah.
Red bull. Because I, I don't, I don't, I don't sleep, I don't sleep, so.
That's why, that's why.
Everybody knows me, I'm a outdoorsman, whether it's, uh, you know, right now it's hunting, uh, you know, going, going just, uh, and, and people ask me, how can you do that all? It, it's, you can really, uh, think a lot and, and recharge, uh, by boating, fishing or, fishing or hunting, that's, so that's what I, that's what I do.
Doug? How you recharge your batteries, man?
Two things. I'm gonna show you. This is the first.
There you go.
That's what recharges my battery. When I get to the house, that little boy wants to do all kinds of stuff and I can't say no to him. We'll get in the car, we're driving around the block, he's happy.
That's right.
That's what recharges my battery every day when I see that little boy.
Can I borrow him?
Doug, and Doug, you reminded me of that also, when I, when I'm able to see my granddaughter, it, uh, will recharge, no matter what, it will recharge, uh.
And you said it was two. You said it was two.
Yep.
You said it was two things.
Oh, did I say two?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Driving.
Oh, drive.
Driving is, is my, you know, I can drive, I get on, get out of the car, sometime wherever late meeting, I would take two hundred all the way in to Ocala, just to kinda drive, just kinda relax, play some of my, uh, my, uh, my jazz music. Play some of my, uh, my, uh, my jazz music. Because I knew you were gonna say something. Not now, you won't, we will somewhat.
Randy, how do you recharge your batteries?
Send an email.
I like that.
We prefer you find another way. And Ron, what is yours?
Well, here's what I was gonna say, I, I really, I'm glad it worked out the way it did because I, I saw something here. Uh, years ago, I'm sure we all did this, remember the Meyer-Briggs personality tests or whatever? And at the end of that, I think I did mine in leadership citrus. And at the end of that, everybody was shocked because they, we had to determine if we were an introvert or an extrovert. And everybody just assumed that I was an extrovert, right, because what we do. And it, it was amazing to me that I was mainly the only introvert in the group. And the way that that was pointed out to me was how do you recharge your batteries? And think about everybody's, everybody in this group, basically, you go off by yourself, you do something by yourself, alright? That's a sign of an introvert. The sign of an extrovert is you have to go out and be around people and go to parties and, you know, get, get the energy from, from the group. That's how extroverts tend to recharge themselves. So I'm not gonna try to categorize you, but I do think the one thing we now found that we all have in common is that, like after yesterday, I, I've told people this. I can be on TV, I can be interviewed, I'm not nervous at all, I can have a very tense meeting like yesterday, I go home and I sleep like a baby, but it's because it was like I just ran a marathon. You know, other people, I've, I've heard people talk about politicians this way. Are you ever, they ask staff, they go, are you ever gonna run for office? Oh, no, 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 no. Why? Because my boss is in politics and he lives for the crowd, he lives for the, you know, work in the room, I can't, I, I just drives me crazy. So that tells me politics is not my game because, um, but, but that's what I have to do, I have to go off, I have to be by myself, I run, I ride my bike. I love, when we go on a camping trip, I put my feet up and I read a book and, and that's what I do. And being in large groups and large crowds, I can do it, but people always used to say, well, Ron's really aloof, you know, he, he, he's off, he's standoffish and that's just because I am just very uncomfortable in, in big groups of people. So there we go, we all have something in common that we tend to like to be, but, yes.
Funny little sidebar on that. Um, I was first tested in sixth grade and I tested as an introvert. And I don't know how I had the capacity to figure this out in sixth grade, but I was, I remember taking note of the questions. And at the end of it, I put two and two together, I decided that extroverts tend to, based on the behaviors they're modeling, extroverts tend to be more successful. Tend to, obviously, that's not a, that's a broad brush. And so the next time we were tested, like a year or two later, I, I was very close to the line, I actually switched to being an E. But very close to the line, but my recharge is, I don't watch TV, I literally watch almost no TV. I read a really good book or I exercise or I go out in the boat or I do things like that, but it's solo. Because it really takes it out of me to be extroverting all the time.
And that's why my, you know, when you think about it, the job we do really takes a lot on us because we don't go into these high-pressure sys- situations and get our batteries recharged.
That's great.
You know, we go in, it's very draining.
Yeah, and, 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 and listen, if you go out to eat somewhere, wherever you go, someone's in your ear. Hey, I need to talk to you about something and I, and I, I've got the-
When are you gonna pay my bill?
Well, no, I get to the point now. Hey, you call me, you know, St. John's on Monday night, I usually meet, uh, you, the old, my brother and a few, we have a few beers and, but, you know, someone's in your ear and I look at him, hey, call me, call me tomorrow, call me later today and I'll talk to you about it, but now, you know, I'm gonna, it's my time, you know, but, uh.
Can I tell you two things so you can get to know me a little bit better?
Anything you wanna tell us.
Last, this morning, I got a couple calls, I can't believe you voted that way, I got one last night, blah, 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 blah. You really let us down, you're a sellout, blah, blah, blah. And I said-
Won't be the last.
I said, but, how many times did I vote that you liked? Well, you did four good ones. I go, so you want me to always vote like you want me to vote? Oh, so that, that's confirming to what you said, it's, we can't always be what they want us to be. And the second personal advice, best advice I ever got was from my father. He said two things, I was very young, very young, remember, I got in trouble for being fresh to a flight attendant and I got in trouble when I got to New England. And he said, be nice to the people on the way up because you're gonna meet them on the way down. And the cream always rises to the top and that's personally how I live my life. Be nice to them as you're going through your life because you never know when you're gonna meet them on the way down.
I was always, uh, I love baseball, okay? And baseball's really a failure sport, okay, because if you're batting three hundred, you're successful, you know, uh, things like that. But if you're batting three hundred here, you're not, or in business, you're not successful, you know, so, uh, football, you know, you better have a quarterback rating of, you know, uh, s- seventies or eighties, you know. But, uh, yeah, so.
Yep.
You're batting three hundred.
Yeah, oh, well.
Well, here's where I, here's, here's where I think we are, are, are you pretty set, ready to go?
I am set, I would also like to share that I am an extroverted introvert.
An extroverted.
Again, I am married to an extreme extrovert and I believe that I gave birth to an extreme extrovert, so I'm like zero to zero right now.
Right, I didn't know this until not long ago, she come up to me and her mom and my oldest sister were extremely, extremely close, yeah, in, in, when they were younger. Didn't, never knew that, yep.
Well, I'll, I'll, um, less people here, I'll be, I'll be pretty open with it. This was up there with the advice I got that made me be aware, we always talking about having an effect on our children. And, uh, years ago, my oldest son, I guess he was probably ten or twelve. And, um, uh, he was going, both my kids went to a private Christian school and I wanted them to have a biblical worldview and a Christ-centered education and, and so I sent them to that. And so we're doing one of our summer boat trips and it was a pretty hectic day, you know, and weather was rough and I pull in and, and this guy at the dock was less than professional in a way that he was helping me or whatever. And so I, we get all tied up or whatever, my son looks right at me and goes, Dad, I don't believe you treated that man in a very Christian-like attitude. And it's, I looked at him and I said, I wanted to say, well, son, you don't understand, you know, you know, whatever. And, and I looked at him, I said, come on, let's go. And so we went up to the, to the dock and went up to the harbor master and I said, I'm here to apologize. And he said, what for? And I said, my son just pointed out to me that I treated you very badly and I'm here to apol- Oh, no, no, and no, no excuses, you know? Uh, and that was good advice because, you know, I, you know, if you're gonna teach your kids something, it's great when they can turn around and, and reteach you. So for the new, uh, family person, just remember that as you, be careful what you teach your kids because they're gonna come back and-
The kid, the kid, you know, whether, whether a kid really knows it or not, they're gonna tell you the hurtful truth. You know, and you need to listen because I, I, I've had those, you know, sayings and you look at them, it's like, oh, boy, you know? But the kids will tell you the hurtful truth not even knowing what they're, what they're telling you, you know?
Well, here, here's what I want to do, I gotta wait for everybody to get back, but I think we're ready to bring this baby in for a landing here and, uh, so here, here's hopefully how the, our madness worked out. Let's see who we're waiting on for at least two of us to get back here.
Why wait on there, here's, I, I just wanna say, great conversation today from everybody and, um, I think everybody brought a little something different to the table today and I, I, I do think that, uh, I, I know three things that arise at the top, uh, that, that we'd really need to be on and, you know, uh, economic development, great, Jeff, on that one, uh, you know, infrastructure and, and whatever else rises, but, uh, yeah, good conversation today, really, really good.
Great. What, what I'd like to do, I'm gonna have to say this again, so bear with me, but here, here's where we're trying to get to. What do you have, what, seven goals that you've isolated this down to?
Looks like seven, yeah.
Okay, so the first thing we wanna do is agree that everything everybody talked about is under one of those seven goals some way or another, okay? Uh, as an example, where is the restructuring, the EDC or the economic, like, we, reassess approach to economic development? So that's where the discussion of modeling after the TDC would come under. So as long as you know that and maybe you can put something-
Well, that's what all that is.
Oh, that's what all that is, so, so again, look, that's what we talked about, Veronica feels she's captured all that under those seven topics? Is that what we've come up with? So I wanna make sure before we move on that we've done that, okay?
If there's anything that's on those sheets that you talked about that I did not get to still hear, please let me know and I'll write it down.
Okay. Wait, we're very close, I think, no, not yet, yes.
One, one thing, um, you know, about restructuring, economic development, I think is a great idea and after the TDC. But we need to make sure we have both cities on there, you know, have a representative from them sitting on there also and, and so we're all, you know, kinda, you, you know, on the same page moving forward, economic development, you know?
And just remember this is sunshine committed.
No, that, no, no, I, I agree, but, but I, but I, but I think that, you know, uh, having, you know, a member from Embrunis, a member from Chris River along with us and then, uh, you know, business leaders, uh, you know. But I, I, I think that's a, uh, great way to try to have a, a, a united approach, uh, for success.
Well, I would keep it to a four number of five or seven, whatever it was. You know more than that.
What do y'all, y'all are seven?
Seven, and again, I think the key is, is that we advertise and we have criteria, you know, we want X amount of business people. You may want a representative from each city the way the TDC does, you know? TDC has an elected official, but, but again, this, this is why I wanna do this. Okay, here we are, here's what I'd like to do. Veronica has taken everything we talked about over there, she believes, um, that she has summarized it in her executive summary over here under these seven topics. So if you look at the goals over here and you see these seven topics, if you think that what you wanna talk about is under those seven topics based on what's over here. And again, Veronica, outstanding job, really appreciate the way you, way you've done this. Here's what I propose to do, we have seven topics that, that comes under seven goals. Um, I, the way I calculate, we got about ten months left, we could have one workshop a month, okay? So what I'd like for us to do, the way I'd like to prioritize these, is we will just go through and we'll vote, which one should we workshop first? That'll be our number one priority. Which one will we workshop second? That'll be our number two priority and so on. Which means they'll all get discussed, maybe some workshops will last longer, some won't. But that's when we get to the TDC discussion about economic development, we can just beat that up and talk about the structure of it.
Yeah.
So, so that's what I'd like to do, we, we will go around and how we do, let's, let's take the first one and we'll say, who wants, you know, or, or we can start and say, what, what do you think? Uh, we'll start over here, Scott. What should we workshop first?
I want economic development workshop first.
Okay, Ruthie, economic development?
It all starts there.
Yeah, I know.
Yes.
Okay, and me, so we're unanimous, we want a workshop.
We had unity.
Okay, so there we go, what, number one workshop, and I'm not asking Randy to put this together for next week or whatever, but he knows what we're looking for.
As soon as possible.
We wanna take the TDC model and reconstruct it into what would work for economic development and we'll build from the ground up. Then we'll talk about directors, resumes, all that kinda stuff, so we're all on board with that? Okay, now, let's see, Ruthie, uh, Scott go last time, Ruthie, what do you think should be the next thing?
I'm, I'm, okay, um, it, it starts with economic development and then do we start with attainable housing or infrastructure? Because what's chicken or egg? And, do be quiet, don't influence me.
Well, I'm trying to get you a five oh vote here.
I'm gonna say infrastructure.
Infrastructure, okay.
Not, attainable housing. Attainable housing is fine.
Attainable housing, uh, Scott? You okay with that for two?
I, they're workshops, so I, I, I'm gonna give her my vote.
Okay.
But again, uh, attainable housing is something that is gonna start with economic development, so.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, we got two, anybody dis- let's do it this way, does anybody disagree with making our number two workshop attainable housing? No disagreement, okay, so that's number two. Number three, Jeff, what do you want number three to be?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. Scott, how you feel about that?
Right, on board.
Ruthie?
Again, we're gonna workshop them all, so.
Anybody objection to that being number three? Okay, who hasn't picked you? Holly, what's your?
I'm, I'm fine with all of that, my only concern, um, and I know I don't necessarily have full buy-in here, but on the communication strategy, we need to put that out for bid, how much, far in advance?
If you wanted to go October first, it's gonna have to go out in the summer.
Yeah, so.
Well, first we got a workshop to see if we wanna, so you wanna get that.
That needs to be an agenda item, that needs to be discussed and the board being the voter on whether we're gonna, we're just put it out for bid.
Well, we, we agreed to workshop at first.
You're gonna have to fund it, I gotta know that the consensus is it's gonna be funny.
That, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, let's do this, can we, can we make that number four then? Does anybody disagree? Uh, because as far as I'm concerned, the fu- fund road resurfacing, that's gonna come up in the budget discussion, okay?
Right.
But we can, under that is where I think we're gonna be talking about some of the ideas that Ruthie talked about. So does anybody have a problem with, what are we up to, number four, for the communication strategy, is that what you're saying, Holly?
Yeah, I'm good with that, because like you said, I mean, and advocate for runway extension, that's just an ongoing process, I'm gonna say that's a workshop.
Veronica, can you do this, when you put this together for, for the next meeting, can you list all the sub-things we talked about that you believe fit under each one of those categories?
Yes, I'll do it similar to the way that the minutes were done last time, but it will be-
Great. So it'll be like, you'll have on there that and then whatever was talked, very good, excellent. That way we'll make sure that everything everybody said got on there.
That's wrong, I'm on your hat.
Great, thank you, I understand what you've done, I love it.
Communication strategy is number four.
Yeah, make that number four. Who wants number, pick number five?
Here's, uh, I'm gonna jump out here. You, you brought up impact fees, I'm, and, and I'm just gonna throw this, if you're gonna revisit impact fees, you need to revisit them sooner versus later. Um, so I, I don't know how, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I'm, I'm just pointing it out.
I'm with you.
You know where I am on impact, you know where I am on impact fees, but I, but I do agree that with the growth we're having, uh.
That's what I was just trying to get to, like.
So, you know, but all I'm saying, if you're gonna revisit impact fees, you need to do that sooner versus later.
You wanna do that number three then instead?
I, I think number two, because if, if you, if you look at the-
Months, you're gonna be, so you, if you, if you put it down on the list, all I'm telling you is, you'll be, you'll be a year out.
How about this?
Plus your sixty days, I think it's sixty or ninety days after you do it, Temple, man.
How about this, hold, hold a second, how many workshops, as we sat here today, do we have scheduled this year? None, right?
No.
Okay, we meet twice a month, why don't we say we'll do a workshop two a month and do it on a regular commission meeting day?
Oh, I think that's perfect in the morning.
When we do that, then we'll do the workshops in the morning, have lunch, come back for that. And that way, if we take longer on one, we can and we, the, we'll get through our list because why take all year to talk about something that we wanna get?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I was just pointing out, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna talk about impact fees, you better do it sooner than later.
So we'll say one and two will be the first workshop, how's that, okay? Our first month and then three and four will be the second.
So that's gonna be, we're gonna start in February?
I believe it's February, March, and then revisit impact fees, if we were number five, it'd be the first meeting.
Is that good for you? Does that meet the schedule? Let's make it, let's-
I'm trying to remember if there's anything else scheduled.
Let's, for, for, let's, how about this?
I know the one meeting in February, you got that five-thirty in the evening, so it's gonna be a fairly long day, but that's fine with me.
That's our job.
That's twenty seconds.
Can we do this, folks, let's change, um, if you don't mind, let's put revisit impact fees number two and move, um, increased, move everything back that way? I mean, can we do that?
I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we got one, two, and Veronica, if you could just move everybody down one from that then? And then what do we have per year accounting there? Okay, so number one is?
Reassess approach to economic development.
Okay, number two is?
Revisit impact fees.
So we'll do that on our first month of February, right? March will be what?
Increase attainable housing.
Uh-huh.
Invest in infrastructure to incentivize growth and development.
Okay, and then what do we have left?
Consider communication strategy would be the next one.
Okay.
And then we have fund road resurfacing and then as Holly mentioned, maybe the runway extension is not a workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's up to you guys, I, you know, we, we could knock these out easily by April, so they're all gonna get talked about. I think road resurfacing, um, my opinion is, when we get into the budget, that's when that big discussion-
And then like you said, runway extension, that's an ongoing project that, that's happening anyway.
So how about we plug in the next one then, road resurfacing and then that?
Money question on road resurfacing.
Yeah, to me, it's a budget issue.
That's right, we gotta start saying how much we're gonna put in the budget to do it.
Yeah, but if we do, if we do this properly and the proper steps, we're gonna have the money eventually for roads resurfacing.
That's correct.
Right?
Well, and yes, that was part of it too, I think, is that it wasn't just fund it, it was how to fund it and in what process to do it, so, there's only that's what it's about.
So the only thing we have left that hasn't been workshopped is the runway extension, what do you wanna do with that, Holly?
Can we?
You want, you wanna?
I, I said the runway extension itself is, is ongoing, but at some point, we probably need to have a discussion on what we're doing with Chris River Airport because they are separate entities, separate valuation, you know, sep- separate value propositions, et cetera.
Could we do an airport, airports?
We probably should because we should look at both the airports.
Not just Chris River, but both.
We're putting all this money into the Embrunis Airport, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're, we're, it's some kind of an approach based on what we expect to get. So we'll, we'll make that number seven then, is that, does that finish, is that?
When will, um, uh, when will legislature finish up their session?
Sixty days from when they start, which I think's the tenth.
So in April.
Unless they extend it.
In April, we'll know if there was an appropriation to extend the runway. Be a great time to talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's look at this, give us a review of Veronica's UC, what do we got here?
First in February will be reassess approach, um, second- First in February will be reassess approach, um, economic development. Second in February will be revisit impact fees. First in March will be increase attainable housing. Second in March will be invested infrastructure to incentivize growth and development. Uh, then into April, we consider communication strategy, then fund road resurfacing, second meeting in April, and then first meeting in May is advocate for runway extension.
Or, or just airport workshop.
Where airports work.
Air, airport strategic, you know, airport infrastructure strategic plan is basically what that needs to be.
Okay, so, everybody sees that? Is there anybody that disagrees with what we have up there?
Nope.
Any disagreement? No dissension? Okay, so, could you tell us what our goals were for today?
Goals were to come up with a handful of goals, short term and long term, with agreement on funding and priority. Develop goals and benchmarks for long-term planning for infrastructure. Again, infrastructure was a big part of that, and then, um, to create achievable long-term goals that resonate with the community.
And my opinion is, by the time we workshop these, we'll have done that. Because we're, we're unified, we're leaving here with unity, that we're gonna workshop these to death, and either we're gonna advance them or they're gonna die, right? So that in itself will prioritize, in my mind, what's important, right? And if we, and if, and what by workshop in these, we'll be able to limit what we talked about today and just focus on that and get into the details and, and talk about all the ideas, okay?
At that point, you can do your short and long-term goals.
Right, right, and then we can say, road resurfacing is gonna be both. It's gonna be short-term, cause we gotta do it every year, but it's gotta be long-term too, because there's gotta be a funding mechanism in it, right?
And infrastructure.
Right, so I, I think, you tell me now, I think we, we've assigned priorities and goals, uh, we're gonna outline objectives and benchmarks. I think we're gonna do that at the workshops. When we get to the workshops, cause remember, we always leave these every year and say, oh, we gotta do this like every three months, we had to do this like every six months. Well, now we're gonna do a couple of them every month and we'll keep going back and addressing it. So I think we've done that. Uh, I would just wanna say now, this is for any comments, other discussion items that didn't come up in our first group around the table, that we've looked at all this. Knowing now that, keeping in mind, Veronica, could you draw a line at the bottom?
By the way, my marker too.
Now, okay, this is, if we're very efficient this year and after May, we've workedshopped everything we wanted to talk about. Once we've done all that, is there anything else you'd like to see up there us to talk about this year, even as a workshop for a long-range plan? I think, I'm just gonna throw one up there, I would love to see a plan for moving debt payments into long-term capital purchases. I'd like to have a discussion about that. Would anybody disagree with that?
Nope.
So could you put down like a, a debt reduction to, uh, capital improvement kind of thing? And that, this is our backup list in case we run out of things to talk about.
Can, can I add, ask you, uh, on the attainable housing, could we just add also attainable workforce housing?
Sure. We're, we're here to workshop it, so we can talk all that in there. The other thing I'd like to put up there, we've talked about this, but it needs to be out in front of us. We might not get to it this year, but we need to go back and we need to talk about the landfill. You know, we put universal trash to bed, but it did not solve what brought universal trash up, which was the landfill. So if we get a chance, I don't know if it's gonna need a workshop, but we've talked about, I've heard privatizing, I've heard, you know, doing all these different things. So we need to start having a general discussion, I think, cause that's definitely in the five to 10-year work plan, okay? Would anybody disagree with that?
I would vehemently agree with it.
Okay. And, uh, and really, that's, that was the things that if we get to it, I'd like to. Is there anything else? Yes, sir?
Uh, broadband throughout the county. I mean, we, uh, are struggling in certain areas, not all areas, but in certain areas.
Well, there's a committee that's been set up, I think I emailed you all the committee members. There was a gentleman, Commissioner Kennard gave us, uh, from some doctor's.
Frank D.P.I.A.'s.
Okay, uh, as it relates to that, uh, the committee's a requirement to, to apply for competitive grants. That committee's been set up. They haven't met the first time yet. Uh, but, you know, that's on one, how the money's gonna flow, I don't.
No, I know there's a bunch of money they're putting in for state, rural, rural, uh, broadband area, but, um.
Does that fall under the invested infrastructure?
We're not considered a rural county, it's one of those issues.
I know, I know, but, uh, or, you know, that can also come up underneath, um, economic development too, and have a discussion right there with it. But I just think that's something that needs to be discussed, cause it's becoming issues, especially with, with the COVID and kids having to learn from home, you know, um, I, I know that I had an issue, uh, you know, used to in rural city, which is back now. They could go and just sit in a library parking lot and they could get on broad, you know, they could get on the internet and they could do, do their stuff. Well, then that went away and that, man, just people just were very upset with that, but we got it back going again where they can still go sit in that, sit in the parking lot and still use their computers and things like that, so. But again, I, I, I think that's an issue all over, but I think we need to move that forward.
Where does resiliency fit in all of this?
Resi, should fit in all of it.
I mean, is it a separate subject, or is it just something that we need to make sure that we address in all our infrastructure?
I think that would be an appropriate discussion. We're applying for a grant, uh, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is going to, I think it's two, but we're, we're applying for that. Because we're different than Tampa or Miami-Dade or whatever, because they have a billion dollars' worth of assessed value and, you know, to put a wall around it and pump it out and spend a lot of money is a viable thing. The problem that we've got is we don't have the density of property values. So the question becomes, okay, what's the best way to achieve it? I mean, obviously you can raise the road, but that didn't help the adjacent properties.
Flood them.
Well, let's put it on there as a, just put resiliency down there, Veronica, and I, I think I gave you my, I heard the best elevator speech when somebody talks about, um, sustainable and resilient, you know. The, the guy that runs MacDill Air Force Base said, US Central Command operates out of MacDill Air Force Base. We cannot shut down because of a weather event. I thought that summarized the whole thing, right? So we'd have to look at things like, um, you know, when, when we look at these kind of, uh, issues, you know, is it something that we're building just for today or are we building it for 100 years? You know, definitely when you start talking about building buildings, you're talking about that type of thing, so, uh, all, all that, I think, comes into play. Anything else that, that, generally speaking, cause I, I think if we can stick to this and when this gets put together, we'll make sure that these items, when they come up, might be three or four months from now, we'll say, what was that, was under there? Well, we'll have our, our little list to look back on, okay?
I, um, was it, um, uh, three days ago or four days ago now? We implemented the, uh, boat launch fees. I think at some point, we need to identify a list of or prioritize projects, uh, that those funds will be used for. Now, just this week, I think it was this week or last week, um, Randy sent us an email, um, outlining a proposal from the city of Crystal River, that I think is a great idea. You know, the, uh, that would be, um, uh, that would be something that I think is worthy of, um, you know, using funds like that if, if this thing materializes. But I think that's a discussion that we need to have, uh, as a board. You know, bathrooms, uh, at the, uh, at the, at the boat ramps, or, uh, property acquisition for additional boat ramps, whatever it might be. Property acquisition for, for additional parking. Uh, as, uh, right now, the focus is working out the bugs in the system and getting it to exactly what we had envisioned. Well, that's fine, but what are those funds, uh, you know, what are, what are the, the projects that we're going to use those funds for? To improve the, uh, uh, the boat ramps and access to the water.
And, and I, and I still, this really comes back to some kind of, um, legacy we can pass on to the effect of whoever the commissioners are for five years from now. That, a lot of people are still gonna be here and they're saying, hey, we were promised this was gonna be used for this. Well, how will they know that if we don't have a list? You know, it's like roads. It might take us 20 years to get there, but that was the list we identified, so I think that's a great idea. Anybody else?
Um, three things that we touched upon. Doug mentioned it, we might wanna revisit in the budget, getting somebody to help, because I don't know how one person does five people, but, uh, he said he needed a half a person, a clone. And, um, two, I don't know when I would really discuss with you all accessory dwelling units, because I have a plan about that and I would love to talk about it. And, um, three, on the 11th of January, I've reached out to Randy, I'm going to Tallahassee and I've, uh, the chamber arranged for me to meet with Dane Eagle, Economic Development, right? The development of economic opportunity. And the only thing that I have as of now to discuss is getting a bigger hangar in Inverness. I didn't know if there's anything you would want me to bring up with them.
Everything you get in Inverness.
Do we have, um, do we have any kind of application pending with them? Any requests from them?
Uh, we have the one that we just got last year. There's been discussion about, uh, the gentleman that's the FBO at the Inverness Airport. Uh, for that, however, he's not quantified how they measure. VEO is one of these agencies, but it's gotta be very results-oriented.
Yes, and, and I have a meeting with him on Friday with, and, um, with Jim Green to try to get them a business plan.
Cause he needs, uh, he needs a business plan, he needs to say, okay, my business is gonna go from X to Y. I'm gonna hire 10 people or 20 people or whatever, average wage is gonna be X dollars.
Yeah.
And that's what he needs.
Is the guy in Inverness?
Yeah.
And we need to hold his feet to the fire. I mean, I, I mean, look, I like the guy.
Gotta reel him in.
Yeah, he needs to be reeled in.
I, I would say there's items, the big things we need to workshop, when it comes to those items, I think you can bring it up under your area, uh, on the agenda and see where the county, the commission wants to move with it and then we can, we can react. If it turns into a big thing, then we can workshop it.
You talking about the accessory dwelling?
Yeah, just put it, put it on the agenda and give it to me, we'll take care of it.
I have a, some real thoughts about that, and, uh, um, anything that you guys would like me to ask Dane Eagle that would help us? Seems like my.
Everything you get for the Inverness Airport.
Anything you can get. I mean, doesn't hurt to ask.
Well, I think, you know.
What are you gonna say, multi-use purpose?
Giving some specific direction. You know, quite frankly, I, I think, I think we need, uh, larger hangars.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know if, if that's in their arena, but we need lo, we need hangars that can house larger airplanes.
It, it's in their arena if, uh, if you can associate it with increased jobs. Okay, they, they're very keen on performance contracts. So, for example, if, if at the Inverness Airport, they're proposing to take, you know, smaller planes and they're going to recycle the parts, rebuild planes or whatever, that would be something they bite into. As it relates to a hangar where somebody flies in and parks in, that's not something that they're typically fond of. Now, obviously with a little nudge from proper people, they could be encouraged.
That's why we're doing a friend do business plan.
Those folks are already building their own hangars. They have land leases from us.
No, 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 we're talking about a large jet hangar for, um, people that come in. They need that space, not just the personal hangars, like somebody's gonna, is flying in for.
Talking about transient, we call them transient. People that aren't based there, they come in and they go.
Yeah, yeah, like there was a, there was a guy going to the.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna have a workshop on airports, so we'll, we'll, we'll get.
There are 50/50 grants for FDOT, so you know.
Yes, yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm touching on with Dane Eagle.
Yeah, find, find out what's available, what we need to do. Uh, to me, that's the way to do it. Come back and say, we need this, here's what's available, uh, you know, and, and to me, it's, it's what's, what's in our end of it. There is something I'd like to get up there also, uh, I wanna give you the topic and then I'll explain it, and that is succession planning, okay? And here's, here's two things I'm thinking about. One is, um, at the TBRPC, whoever from Citrus County ends up going down there, it's a massive organization. It, they cover unbelievable amounts of stuff. You're dealing with, uh, big cities, small cities, and all six counties, okay? If the Tampa Bay region was a country, it'd be the fifth largest economy in the world. Okay, so it's, it's a big area. The thing I told you, when I went down there, it took me a year just to sit and listen to what was going on. So I asked the chair down there to put together an orientation day, where all new members that came in, would go through this orientation, they'd all sit down, have presentations from all the directors, and maybe get people up to speed faster. Doug has done a fabulous job in the past with the Citizens Academy. What I would like us to talk about is the creation of a new commissioners. Cause I know FAC has one, but that's more of an indoctrination into their way of thinking. What I think new commissioners, and we've all been through it, need to have is like a Doug and a Veronica or whatever to say, you're not gonna learn everything in a day, but between the time you're elected and you get sworn in, we'd like to take you through and start introducing you to department heads and, you know, a regular program that says a new commissioner should know these things. And then part of that would be given this goal, given the strategic plan, given, uh, you know, those kind of things. So a new commissioner can go home and look at it and start to feel like this is not some huge thing that can't be absorbed, so I'd like.
The Commissioners Academy?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, we, I would call a commissioner, but part of that now is also this. I'm doing my succession planning, uh, I'm, uh, talking to anybody that wants to run for county commission, telling them what I think a commissioner should know. I'm not telling them my, if I endorse them or support them, uh, it's like I've talked to all you guys, right? Eventually, and I just said, here, here's what I learned being a commissioner. I think you need to rely, you need to do that. So I think all that becomes part of it. I think any of us that are le, know we're leaving office, we should be charged with leaving our fellow commissioners the best they can possibly be, okay? So even though I'm not gonna be here next year, I feel it's my job to, to work to help you guys be successful as you move on in the future. And I think that's what we're trying to do. So now I'm gonna turn it to Randy and say, I know you're not gonna be here until you're 114 years old. So I think that you ought to, um, at some point in time, develop your, your plan. And I can tell you what I would, I would propose, and it's just food for thought, we're not gonna vote on it. But I would like to see when the next county administrator, and I hope it's not for a long time, uh, comes in and applies, that we just don't look locally. That we open it up like they did with other groups, like we did when we found Randy. You know, we, we come up with what we're looking for, you hire, I'm saying you, cause I hope Randy's here after, I'm going. But you set up a headhunter, you go out and, and they bring in people like they brought Randy to us, and the boards in the future do it in a professional manner. And just instead of saying, hey, I know this person is a good person, let's bring him in, maybe let the local people apply, even if it's current staff. Let them apply, but put them in a pool with all applicants. That, that would be what I would encourage. Of course, that's just my view. And, and so I think, you know, Randy will be giving some thought to this, but I think sometime this year, we should have something like that in place. And Denise probably will be here until she's 114, but I'm sure that's why we have assistant county attorneys, cause she can make those calls too. But, but I always think that, you know, we always have to say, if something happened to us today, what, what's gonna happen tomorrow? You know, do we have a smooth, seamless transition in, into where we need to go to, you know, so.
That's what I thought. I'm curious, what is your succession plan?
He doesn't know yet, that's why I brought up the.
We have two members of staff that I would be very comfortable recommending that they could do it at least on interim basis. I mean, my recommendation would be go, go to national search.
Definitely national.
Damn right.
Yeah, but, but again, we have.
How do you feel?
I, I, how do I feel? Uh, from the talk I've heard around town, uh, the, what, what I'm hearing, that they're nowhere near capable.
And, and, and again, I'm just being, you know, me.
No, I know.
You guys have known me for years. I'm being totally candid, and I don't mean this in a mean way, although it's been pointed out to me, everything I say comes out in a mean way, but, uh.
No, you're dead on. You're dead on.
But, but here's, here's the deal. We've had county administrators in the past, they've been wonderful people, great people. But they weren't excellent county administrators, uh, so I don't think it's about hiring.
Rather than flat terrapin.
Well, but I don't think it's about hiring nice people, or people that know the community, or people that this group likes, or that group likes. I think it's about hiring the people that you were hiring them for your company. You know, would you hire your friend to work for you, or would you hire the best person you could find to work for you? That's what I hope it comes down.
The best person you could find.
And, and that's why I, here, and here's another little thing, just to think about this. When Scott and I came into office, we did not have a county administrator. So we had to hire a county administrator. We did not have a county attorney, so we had to go hire a county attorney. Then they sent me to, uh, Tabarta, okay? Tabarta had an interim executive director. They were, we were in the process of hiring one there, and they sent me to, to the TBRPC. And they didn't have an executive director, so my first few months in office, we, I had to be involved in the hiring of four executive directors. And, uh, so, and, and most of those people are still there, and both of them are excellent. So I, and all those were done with national searches. The guy we have now at, at TBRPC, we got from Massachusetts. So, um, and he was excellent because he was used to federal, uh, grants, and so he's been excellent with that.
Yeah, Ron, I'm gonna touch base on something real quick, that, um, in the past, you know, administrator would come in, stay not very long, be gone. And they'd bring, stability is the best thing that has happened since we brought Randy in. He's been here just over seven years with us, but he's been here, okay? It's not been a year, any. It's not been a year and he's out, like we talked about that, okay, a year and a half and, and they're out, and you can't, you know, uh, boards have to realize they need to hire the best person, uh, for the job, and I got news for, uh, the next administrator. He's gonna have a tough road to follow, uh, behind this guy right here. Um, but to hire someone with his knowledge, uh, you're gonna have to pay for that, uh, you know, pay more than, uh, pay for that, but, um, but again, stability has just been great for us, uh, over the last seven years.
And the only reason I say that, and no offense against anybody, and maybe it'll be the wor- way it works out, but there's an organization, I won't mention the organization, but we know who it is, and when we were looking for an executive down there, a couple of us said, well, let's go for a national search. And the majority said, no, 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 we got a great guy right here, let's hire him, bad mistake. He was a great guy, but he wasn't, he wasn't the best that we could've got. So, that's all I'm saying, is you're gonna have one chance to, to do it right, take the time and do it, that's just my advice, whatever the future board does, and like I said, hopefully that'll not be here, but I think that needs, we need to have a discussion about that, 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 that all that's in place, so, yes, ma'am?
I think what this board has that is a tremendous, um, asset is, we do have collegial respect, and, and we come together, we, we all are successful business people. And we, there was a period of time with Citrus County, that when we were trying to hire people to come work for us, we were very dysfunctional. And.
You don't have that now.
We don't have that, so, it, w- we're prime, we know Randy is, you know, close to retirement, and if he could find the right person, even with this board nationally, and train him up to what he's doing, we're gonna be successful. That's why I keep pushing, where's the, this assistant administrator, because we have him training that person. Now, he always says, well, not always does the assistant go to the administrator, but that's what we need to look for, and if we could find somebody that is, um, not necessarily at the end of their career, but maybe towards the beginning, and really say, our school systems are so strong, and look at this, that we're going in, and what we're planning here with our workshops is all building to a younger person who could be trained up properly.
Well, that's why I wanted to put it on there, we don't need to decide today. The thing about training our replacements, we can do, the thing about creating a new commissioner orientation, we can do, and we'll leave it up to Randy to bring it to us to discuss his succession plan whenever he feels he wants to do that. But that's why it's down there, just to remind us to talk about it. Randy, is there anything that you think should be on our radar this year that we haven't talked about? I know we talked about a ton of stuff, but, um, anything that pops up to you that?
No, I, my only caution is we need to watch out on the legislative side, to make sure that they don't pass things that adversely impact us locally. And there's, there are a number of things floating around there, and hopefully that won't happen, but we need to be aware.
So, are you gonna give us a list?
Okay, so, I feel this is excellent, everybody's got stuff up there that they think's important, we've scheduled workshops for all of it. Um, we will, we will get some good stuff accomplished out in front of us, or we'll decide it's not necessary to deal with. So, at this time, we're gonna do a few closing comments, we'll work around the table, say what you wanna say. I told you, I was saying I'd get you out here by three, I think I'll get you out here by one thirty, so. Uh, again, it's not how much time we spend, it's how efficient we've been, I think we have been, I really appreciate Veronica and everybody putting it together. This is much better than walking around sticking dots on the walls and stuff like that that they talk about. And I knew all these things were worthy, they're big, big issues, and they're all worthy of workshopping, rather than trying to sit here and resolve them all today. Uh, plus now the public knows what we're gonna talk about, so you don't have to wait for your phones to light up about impact fees, that can start happening tomorrow, you know, so. Okay, let's see, so, uh, who wants to start? Somebody closing comments? Denise, I'm gonna, you didn't talk much today, I'm gonna give you the first of the last words. What, tell, tell us what you thought of today, was it worthwhile, did you, did you get a feel for the commission, what, what you're thinking, so?
I try not to talk too much, y'all, you know, I get, I get this.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm giving you the.
No, I, I mean, I, I think, I, I think I have a, have had conversations with each of you individually about the things that, that, that we talked about today. I think that it's a, it's a good opportunity for you guys to, to have others look at your ideas, and you get feedback from each other about your thoughts and, and where you see things going, and, um, you guys really are a lot, thinking a lot more alike than you are not alike, so. I, I think it was good for y'all to get to hear from each other.
Is that an engagement ring?
No. Thanks for asking.
But you know, with her poker face, we would know if it was.
Like, I'm looking at that.
She'd be like.
I'm looking at that diamond thinking, wow, sorry.
It's, it's touched on, it's not real.
Randy, any comments about today?
No, the only thing, I think there've been a lot of tremendous ideas, uh, the only thing we're gonna have to watch as we go forward is what's the best way to pay for them.
It's always about the money.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
You know, we haven't focused on that a lot, but there are a lot of great ideas, and the question is, you know, how quick can we achieve them, and where the resources is gonna take them?
Great, and I think it was Jeff's opening comment is, you know, if we don't have money in the budget, that we can talk about it all day long, but, so, we have to deal with that, so.
If it isn't in the budget, it doesn't get done.
That's exactly right. Anything else, any other comments? Uh, Randy? Okay, Ruthie?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I, I was.
How about today? Was, this is your second one? Is it, is it getting easier every year?
It was much better, I didn't come in with not knowing, I, I feel good, I think I'm, I feel good about how we're getting melding as a team, and this year, we have a big opportunity with that Parkway, and I think that all our egos are in check, and if we can just think about it, and, and we, or I'm thankful to be sitting with each one of you. I might not always like all of you.
Yeah, what are you looking up for?
But. But.
What are you looking down here for? Will I keep you in check?
But I think that we, I think there isn't any, and I've said it before, there isn't any one of us that aren't sitting up here that doesn't honestly care about Citrus County.
I'm glad, I'm glad you love me.
Scott?
No, great, great, uh, it's always a great time to come together, and, uh, you know, I think, I think maybe Jeff mentioned it before about doing these twice a year versus just once a year, but I, I think today, um, you know, we did something today that we really had done, and the ones, we, we're gonna workshop these, uh, issues, and we, we've never done that before. So, I think actually today, we've come out, uh, smelling like a rose, because, uh, we're going to keep, uh, the, the goals moving forward by workshop, and we never did that before, so, uh, success.
Can I ask a question? Uh, might see, and I'm gonna make a suggestion, it's a little less convenient, but I think the atmosphere is more conducive. Rather than to do the workshops in La Can- or in Inverness in the morning of a board day, it's better if we can come around a table, a common table where we're working like, in this atmosphere, rather than what I call a judicial proceeding, where you're kinda sitting as the judge, but the decisions, you're all, you know, what type of venue and setting you'd like to do that.
I love that. It would just mean we'd meet here and then go over there, or there and back to here and back and forth. It's up to you, what, what do you think?
And you always let the public talk at your workshops.
No, well, you don't have to, it's up to you all.
But we typically do, and we should at workshops, we, we should. I, I'm okay, I love this, but I think to have the public involved at the courthouse is a better venue, that, uh, if we were doing it like today, this is a good venue, but I agree with Denise, part of our workshops has always been listening to what the public has to say about it, so.
Plus, I, I would suggest that particularly the one where we're dealing with impact fees, who want the public to go through, that'll be tough.
You think that'd be a heated conversation.
Well, that's brilliant.
Okay, well, that's good.
I'll take that.
I would say, um, you know, whenever we do get around to, you know, renovating our own space, having the circular, the half circle for the commissioners, and I would really love to know why we didn't have a commissioner orientation last year. Seriously.
We did, we did, we met with every director, we had more than they did.
But you and I, you and I did it on our own, we, we both, we both asked for that.
We had more, you did it in two months. Did you have two months?
Otherwise, I felt like I was thrown in the deep end, so I loved that idea.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
I just wanted to bring your attention on the clerk side, that we're running offline, so that's also something to think about, we upload it when we get back, and nobody can watch it, and we know she's going to shut off.
I, I think it's better, that's a good suggestion, but I think we should stick with the workshops at the board, but I, it's also been mentioned by Holly said, someday, someday down the road, the commission chambers will be remodeled, I think it'd be better if we had kind of a horseshoe dais instead of the straight one, which makes it more, you know, this, and I gotta tell you, sitting in the middle, anybody that's sitting in the middle, you feel like you're ignoring half the commissioners half the time, because, because you can't see them. But, okay, so we'll do that. I'm sorry, Scott, you were still talking, you said it's a good idea about having the workshops and?
No, I'm, 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 I'm good.
Okay, Doug, you have any comments about today?
No, I talked enough, sir, it was good.
We appreciate it. Uh, Holly, any comments about today, what you?
No, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm agreed with it, what everybody said, and I just gave you crap about the commission orientation.
No, no, that's not.
It while agreeing with you, understand.
Okay, Jeff?
Um, I, I would just say that as our, uh, phones and emails start blowing up about some topics we've dealt with today, uh, I would.
Guys, guys.
Sorry.
I would, I would remind those, those folks calling or emailing, or just ask them, if we're not going to go down this particular road, how do you suggest we pay for this?
Right.
It has to be paid for. How do you suggest we do it?
Exactly.
Give me your solution. And, and we'll bring that, you know, we'll bring that solution to the workshop.
Yeah, I think the currency ought to be talked about in the workshop, something we got rid of.
You know, we, we've, we've got, we've got real infrastructure issues, not to revisit all of it, but we'll, we'll talk about that in the, in the workshop.
All right, well, my comments for the day are this, thank you all for being here, thanks for the clerk office being here and doing their job, thanks to Veronica and Robin and everybody else who worked so hard to make it happen. Um, I do wanna say this, and I, I take this in a way I'm saying it, because I, I don't, I, I do my best not to be, come across as boastful, um, but today is the seventh commissioners retreat. Anybody know why?
Because you started it.
Right. And this month is the seventh leadership summit, anybody know why?
Cause you started it.
There we go. So, so all I'm saying.
You want us to praise you?
No, no, all, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is, five or six or seven years from now, I want you guys to be able to say, you know, why we're doing this today? Because I started it, you know, and to me, that's what, because if it's good, you, you stick with it, you know, and if it's not, you don't, and that's why I think every chairman has the challenge, um, I haven't worked with, with, uh, either Holly or Ruthie, but I know when Jeff did it and Scott did it, I always left a retreat feeling it was useful, feeling like, you know, in the first retreat we did, we had two commissioners, didn't show up.
I was just gonna say, this is the sixth one, that we've had full participation.
That's right, so, I, I would just, the challenge for the chair is to not waste people's time, to make it valuable, so that you feel like when you went home today, this wasn't a waste of my day, and I hope you leave here today feeling like it was a good use of our time. I hope staff heard some stuff, I thought Denise nailed it when she said, we sit and talk like this, we realize we have a lot more in common than we do disagree. And that's what we have to build on, is the common ground that we, that we can work on. So, I just wanna thank you again for being here, for participating, uh, none of you folks are wallflowers, I don't have to worry about anybody not wanting to, to get their input in, and thank you for, uh, allowing me to facilitate this today and for it being so productive, so, go have a great week.
Thank you so much.
And I guess it'll be next week or so before we see you all again, so, we're done.